So for sure, so Isabel's joining us as an alternate, which is great because we haven't had an alternate on the board really this current session. So it's great. It's super helpful. So I don't know if, you know, I'm, you know, just kind of quickly introduce ourselves might be nice. Also, maybe we'll double as an attendance on here on the record that we're all here. So I just, you know, Isabel and I have spoken before, Isabel, I'm Seth, I'm the Chair of the Board. I'm an architect by my day job and welcome aboard. I guess we can go, I don't know, there's not everybody has the same order around here. So Michael, you can go next because as the Vice Chair and then pass the baton on.
Okay. Hi Isabel, I'm Michael Aronson. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board and I'm an urban planner by training, but spent most of my career in the affordable housing world. And I guess pass it on to David if we're going, or Bobby alphabetically, or Nina, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter, just picks up what do we get?
Bobby Baucher, I'm a local, local state broker, asset manager and property manager. Welcome to the team.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Michael.
Next to me, Alberto. We're going in alphabetical.
You're on mute, Alberto.
Hi Alberto Fernandez. I'm a financial manager for a construction company. And I joined the board about a year ago, little over a year ago.
Hi Alberto.
Hi.
Sorry, I missed David.
Hi David.
David, can you hear us?
Hello.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Do you want to introduce yourself to the new alternate Isabel?
David Chow of DC Architects.
Nice to meet you David, thank you.
And Nina?
Hi Isabel, I'm Nina Aaron. I'm a, an urban planner by training. I've been working in construction the last four years as a project manager. Yeah, that's about it.
Hi Nina, welcome.
Welcome.
And Eric?
Hi Isabel, my name is Eric Talbot. I joined the board originally as an alternate, I think, like in 2019, yes, 2019 or 2020. And then I became a full member like this past year in 21. My day job, I'm a project manager for a land bank in the city of Newburgh and I have an education in urban planning as well.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
All right, this is great. So it's actually helpful for me to, you know, we see each other so infrequently and hear so much about our outside worlds. It's kind of nice. Okay, I think Isabel, do you want to just share maybe just a, just a brief, kind of a little bit about yourself? And then we'll.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you Seth. Thank you for the warm welcome, everybody. My name is Isabel Nguyen and I actually work in construction. I've been working in construction for the last 10 years in the capacity of estimating, project management. So I am happy to be on this board and just thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Thanks Isabel. Great, so without further ado, I think we can jump into our.
Give, here, we should probably say who we are as well, since we're.
I'm sorry. I'm just being an asshole here. I'm not French.
Hi, I'm Jaime Martinez. I'm the Planning Director for the Village of Austin. And you want to, I guess Jimmy, you want to go next?
Sure. Hi Isabel, I'm Jamie Kane. I'm the Secretary for the Planning and Zoning Department.
Thank you, nice to meet you both.
Nice to meet you.
Hi Isabel, I'm Amanda Grosey. I'm the Village's Land Use Council. Nice to have you.
Thank you Amanda, nice to meet you.
You too.
And Joe?
Hi Isabel, welcome. I'm Joe Tremoli. I'm your engineering consultant.
Hi Joe, nice to meet you.
You too.
Okay, so now I think I've covered every tile on the box. Now we can get started. You can tell I'm anxious. We've got a lot to do tonight. Okay, so I know that we have our agenda there. I know that was updated this afternoon. Okay, so just want to make sure, yours is now automatically going in fullscreen mode?
We did, I'm not sure, it's not a, there's going to be a couple of changes in order to, because we have some consultants that are here today to talk about a couple of different projects. So Birchbrook is going first. After that, we're going to go to 136 Crotan Avenue and then it goes back to the regular schedule.
I think it would be appropriate for the board to take a motion to, to adjust the agenda accordingly.
Okay, sure. Can I, is there a motion to adjust the agenda the way that Jaime just laid out? To help, to help the folks who had to join us from, from a couple of different projects here tonight?
Michael Aronson motioned to adjust the order of the agenda.
All right, in a second. Don't all jump at once?
Nina, Nina Aaron, second.
Okay, are there any objections? There are no objections, motion passes by unanimous consent and we're going to readjust the, the agenda here. Okay, so then.
Is John here, by the way?
He's not, he couldn't make it tonight, but I don't know if you've got a chance to look at the memo from Birchbrook. It's, we're, you know, basically in agreement with the plan, had a minor recommendation. I could certainly handle it.
Okay. So starting with, with Birchbrook, which is Planning Board 07-19 and BAR 15-19, though we're really only looking at this as a planning board item at this point for a, I guess this is the subdivision approval that we're, that we're looking at tonight.
Right, final subdivision approval.
Final subdivision. So how about, can we bring in the folks to speak to this one?
Oh yeah.
Final subdivision and also the accompanying wetland permit.
Right.
I'm trying to remember. Jonathan Sisak is part of that group. Joe Tremoli, could you help me out later?
Well, Sisak, do you have a list of participants here?
Yeah, they're listed. Also, yeah, okay. Who else? Rajiv Kapoor is the owner, right?
Yeah, Dan Patrick.
Dan Patrick. We have 33 attendees at the moment, so.
Big agenda.
It is.
I don't, Alec Glad, I think Dan Patrick said he would not be here, so maybe Alec Glad is his representative.
Everyone, yes, Alec will be the attorney tonight for the project.
All right.
Anyone else?
Is there anyone else that you're expecting? Paul, I'm not recognizing any of them.
Rajiv Kapoor and.
I think we admitted him already.
Us three, yep. Hey Joe.
How are you?
Good.
All right, so is everybody's in at this point?
Yep. Paul, are you going to want to share your screen?
Yeah, I was just going to share the subdivision plat while Alec gives a summary of everything. Then we can share the plan as well, so.
All right, so I guess I'll. Yep, I can see it. All right, so my name is Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader. I am covering for Dan Patrick this evening and as you know, Paul Sizak, as well as the property owner Rajiv Kapoor are on with me. So just, I was going to step back, give a little bit of a brief overview of what the project is just because it's been some time since we've been before the planning board. So for this application, we are proposing to subdivide the property at 8189 South Avenue into two separate tax lots, which is located in the Village's MF1 multifamily residence district. And as you know, we secured preliminary subdivision approval at the board's February 25, 2020 meeting. So the project site is 4.8 acres total in size and the western portion of the property is presently developed with five, a five building, 79 unit residential development. And after final subdivision approval, this lot will be 3.7 acres in size. And on the eastern portion of the property, the applicant is proposing to construct five townhouses and this borders Golden Road. And after final subdivision approval, this will be 1.2 acres in size. And we did receive DVA and Site Plan approval for the creation of the lot and the five townhomes in 2020. We included copies of those resolutions in our August 24 submission. So we are here this evening for, for, to introduce, reintroduce the project and for final subdivision and wetland permit approval. So since the preliminary approvals in 2020, we have been working with County DOH to secure approval. So the village requires county sign off before the final subdivision approval. And we are pleased to report that the final subdivision plat is signed by the Westchester County DOH. Also, we did include the DOH water main extension and sanitary sewer main extension approvals as part of our submission packet as well. And I just want to note that the final plat is exactly the same as what was preliminary, preliminarily approved in 2020. And as I mentioned at the start, we're also applying for wetland permit approval from the planning board. So since the 2020 approvals, there's a new ordinance requiring us to seek approval for disturbance within the buffer area. But again, the project is no different than what was previously proposed and considered by the board. It's just simply subject to the new wetland ordinance. And as you should recall, this has already been subject to extensive review of potential environment impacts during the initial application phase, which included an extensive review of the impacts to wetlands in the buffer areas. But nevertheless, as Paul can show, the plans had been revised to include a wetland mitigation plan, which depicts a proposed wetland buffer restoration at a ratio of 1.75 to 1, which exceeds the minimum ratio of 1 to 1 as required by code. And I just want to highlight and remind everyone that you're not proposing to develop within the wetland itself, only the newly regulated 100 foot buffer area. And we are in receipt of the colored sessions memo and we will be providing additional details and minor plot and updates as requested by them. So we're here tonight. We're happy to take any comments and questions from the board. But we do ask that the planning board for the application to be in our advisory council this evening.
Can you just quickly walk us through the mitigation measures that you're taking in this plan?
Sure. Can everyone see the, the screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so here's a development. Here is the proposed subdivision line. To the right of this or east, there is, this is the 1.12 acre parcel that was created as part of the subdivision. On the left side is the Lot 1, which is the remainder of the property that will be at the original Birchbrook Manor development. The, you know, the wetlands here are indicated by the blue lines. There's the, as we know, there's that intermittent stream in the middle over here and it's flanked on the left and right sides by a wetland that was delineated. And then there is also an off-site water course on the right side of the property. The property line ends here and there is a 100 foot buffer associated with on the right. That really doesn't affect us, but when you offset the wetland here and the wetland here, you know, this, this is within the wetland buffer. So what we did was we took an area to the left and right of that and created some more plantings down here to supplement our already, you know, landscaping that was part of the approved plan. But basically this, from, from back here to the left was the, the area that we're, we're mitigating, which will consist of removing trash and debris from the wetland area. We'll be taking down invasive species, vines that are choking up some of the existing trees to give them a better chance. Will, you know, we're planning on giving some more information of the procedure of the wetland mitigation. But you know, right now, you know, this is a, it's a wetland, so we don't want to introduce any sort of mechanical equipment back here. So we're going to get into some, some verbiage on how it's going to be all hand mitigated, you know, we'll get somebody in here, a qualified professional being, you know, obtained by the applicant that will, will help identify invasive species. And they'll go in there with, you know, with the company to help take that out. And then it'll be supplemented by wetland plantings on the east side of this water course. Also supplemented by a wildlife forage restoration mix that will be put down just before it starts sloping up the hill toward the existing development. So that's really what the plan will consist of, getting a, a four foot high post and rail fence, which, which was also suggested by Village's consulting engineer, which the applicant is happy to install, which will help create a physical barrier between the development and any sense, you know, any wetland area. And that'll follow the edge of the wetland right here. So when you do the math, our mitigation ratio is, you know, sufficiently addresses the one to one mitigation ratio that's outlined in the village code.
Sorry, I'm on mute. Questions on, on this mitigation plan or, or the subdivision in general?
Just a quick question, you know, obviously wetlands and stormwater runoff are, you know, becoming more and more critical. How did the site fare with Ida?
Well, we haven't been out there, but we haven't really had any specific problems or, you know, the landowners didn't get called by any person downstream. So we're not sure how to answer that. I will tell you that it's pretty, it's not really, not a real analyzed wetland. You can see that it's pretty low lying here. So if there was any breaching of the, of the stream, it would have probably went over the edge and, and had its little, an area for it to go.
I have one other question about the lot lines in that, well, not really the lot lines, but there was a letter that came in from Cuddy and Fader saying that this entire lot was within Austin. And as a result, did not need to provide anything to Briar Cliff Manor. But when I look, it looks like the lot line cuts across, or lot line, the, the boundary cuts across part of the lot at the bottom there. So I was confused about that, why, why you wouldn't have to notify Briar Cliff Manor from a wetlands perspective.
I believe it's because they're not proposing any disturbance to the actual Village of Briar Cliff property that's on a property. That's what was decided during the preliminary subdivision approval.
And I also believe as part of the preliminary approval, they were notified through the general public. So they are, have been involved.
But, so yeah, for purposes of noticing initially, the Village of Briar Cliff Manor did receive, did receive an opportunity for, to give their input. And I'm looking back at the, the final planning board resolution. And yes, the Village of Briar Cliff Manor received notice of the initial application and got their chance to review and comment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't on the board at that time, so I was curious about how that was resolved.
Any other questions or comments right now for the board?
No, not right now, thank you.
I'm just seeing in the chat that somebody is making a comment about the area was affected by Ida and that it sounds like homes do frequently flood with normal rain. So I guess, I, I'm not sure. I know there's a lot of information here in the colored sessions memo. I'm just wondering if there are any particular attention to the potential for flooding.
Joe, I mean, have any of your comments as far as, I know you've reviewed this mitigation plan, but is there anything that you will be, should be discussing or should add to this conversation at this point?
No, I wanted to say that the applicant has prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan as required, mitigating storm events with a 100 year storm. We did witness soil testing out there. There are adequate soils for the infiltration practices that are proposed. We're in agreement with the design and the sizing for the site, for the development. I don't know of any specific problems with stormwater in that area. Obviously, there were comments and they know better than I. I don't know of any issues specific to Walden with Hurricane Ida with the, with the street crossing in particular. I will say that Ida was, I think they categorized it as a thousand year storm. So I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of people experienced some, some form of issue there. But I could tell you that the, the plan as designed, you know, complies in its mitigating storm events through the 100 year. With regard to the wetland mitigation, separate issue from the stormwater, they have provided a mitigation plan that we're in general agreement with. They are almost, you know, what, 70, 75% in excess of the required mitigation. And the two comments that we have were related to physical demarcation and just some level of detail on how they intend to actually, you know, complete the, the restoration enhancement of a wetland area and the buffer. And as Paul has already described, it sounds like they're either well underway of doing that or have a good understanding of what we'll be looking for. So we'll look to get those plans and review that.
If I could just jump in here real quick, as I, I want to make a comment to the general public that's listening right now. I think that your comments are great. We do have public hearings for a reason. The public hearings are the time where the public should kind of come, sort of send forward questions and comments and things of that nature. Going through the chat really is not the best way for it to get documented within a record and it's not the way that these meetings are supposed to be done. So if you do want to comment, just if you can, please try to reserve your comments for the, the public hearing, or you can email me comments so that we have a record of those questions and comments.
I agree. It's not appropriate to be using the chat function when the public hearing isn't open.
My email is jmartinez@villageofostning.org. It's also listed on the agenda, so you should be able to get it there as well. But again, jmartinez@thevillageofostning.org and I will put, I'll put that in the chat.
Thanks Jaime. I think that's actually probably a good segue. I think at this point, it's, looks like there, there may be some people from the public who want to speak to this. I mean, it's an ongoing matter and I think the action that we'd be looking at doing tonight would be moving this forward to, for further review by the Village AC. But at this point, I'd like, I think it would make sense, do we have any motion to open this up to a, a public hearing?
Before we do that, I have a quick comment. How far in the process does this get? Last time, what approvals were granted to this already? Did they get any approvals? I worry on that.
Yeah, so they received preliminary subdivision approval. Well, first of all, they received a negative declaration. They received preliminary subdivision approval and they received site plan approval as well as BAR approval. So what's left is final subdivision approval, the wetlands permit. And I believe that's it, because BAR approval does not have an expiration date.
We were also expecting to have an amended neg deck.
Yeah, that's something we need to discuss.
Right, that's something we were, I would like to talk about as part of this, this conversation. And just to be clear also, I know it was said before, but when this project was first before this board, that was prior to the current wetlands law being enacted. And so that requirement is being triggered because they did not have a final subdivision approval at that time. In order to get that, they now need to comply with, with that regulation. Okay, you know, I think we can move, unless there are any other comments from the board, if we move this forward to a public hearing and see who's here to speak to this.
Yeah, make a motion, this is Baker making a motion and then move to like hearing.
Michael Aronson second the motion.
Any objections? No objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent. So do we have anybody here from the public? And Jaime, I don't know the most, the best way. I think there may be a few people here from the comments. Just to, as well as let them in one at a time, I do ask that you, that when you're let in, you clearly state your name and address or your, for the record. And, and then kind of try to, to, you know, state your, your, your comments or questions concisely.
First we have Robert, Roger Batataria. Bring him in.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, terrific. So thank you very much. My name is Roger Batataria. I live on Holbrook Road, which is just south of this property. There is a stream that runs through this area, kind of connects with Sparta Brook that goes down towards the Hudson. And I can tell you that when we had Hurricane Ida and then almost about two weeks afterwards, we had another significant rainstorm. There, that area was pretty swampy, it was pretty, quite a lot of water built up there. It was quite problematic of an area. So I was surprised to see that we're back in terms of trying to subdivide on something like that. So that's one thing. The second thing is that, what you all need to know is that Briar Cliff in 2021 passed a wetlands law, which I think at the time when the Birchbrook property owners went and spoke to Briar Cliff, it was prior to the passage of the wetlands law, which does require a bit more of a buffer than what they, they think that we originally had. So that changed quite a bit. So there are a couple of things here that really concerns me, right? So we hear about this storm being one in a thousand year storms or one, that the reality is our climate is changing. The reality is that these storms are becoming more frequent. The reality is that the, the intensity of these storms are becoming greater. And the reality of it is that this development will create a significant amount of impervious surfaces for which there needs to be a place for the water to go and be absorbed. So what, where does that leave that? The water that will come down from, as a result of torrential rainfall, will run off onto the adjacent properties and even into this area that would flood into the Brook that would join up with Sparta Brook, creating a tremendous amount of water runoff that would have been other than the normal. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing that I think is a big concern too is if you come down around the bend, traveling north on Holbrook Road as you veer towards Walden, that area, it makes it difficult for like a fire truck to make any kind of a turn in as well as a turn out, because there isn't a proper turnaround in that, that would actually be safe for anybody. And the other piece of it too, this is also a walkway that's there for students who walk from the developments that are in the Briar Cliff area to the Austin High School. My daughter is one of them. This is a blind turn and a blind exit in, in and an entrance out of this particular area. So there aren't any kind of safety precautions that are there. So with all of what I just said there, I would really encourage you guys to take a step back, maybe reconsider kind of how this should be, given the, the nature of the storms, given the small footprint of this entire thing. And reconsider this for becoming something smaller in the way of footprint and something a bit more reasonable, given the amount of, of damage and potential hazards that this property represents, being built the way that they're. being built the way that they're considering to build it with the subdivision as proposed. So I'll leave it at that and thank you very much for your time. And certainly I hope you will consider my comments and my points as part of the decision making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Batataria. And I just want to remind everybody speaking that we have before us to, you know, we're looking at a subdivision and a wetlands permit tonight. So I know some of those comments really related to site plans and other things that we're not really discussing or looking at in this particular hearing or meeting. So with that said, thank you, thank you for those comments and we move on to the next. Jaime, do you want to bring in the next, the hand up? Jaime, you're on mute.
We have Jim Drohan.
All right, Mr. Drohan.
Mr. Drohan, you're a panelist, I can speak.
I'm very sorry. I just wanted to speak briefly on the hundred year flood and the wetlands in regards to flooding issues. Approximately, I would say between 10 and 15 years ago, we had a storm unlike, it might have been Sandy, where the entire area of this project was basically underwater. I would say in a rough estimation, to the middle of their proposed building, right down the line. This area is subject to flooding. I have one of my neighbors, she gets water in her house every single rainstorm. So my fear is that, you know, any change to this wetlands is going to impact all the houses from this subdivision on Walden Road to Maurice as well as the seven homes in the turnaround, the dead end on Fuller Road. It's, I think that's all I have for comments at this point.
Appreciate it.
Thank the board for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Drohan.
If I could just kind of chime in real quickly, I want to note, and Joe Tremella, if you can help me out here. There's no proposed construction on the wetland at all. There's only proposed construction in the buffer area around wetland and between the wetland and the water course. That area in between, there's no proposed construction. The wetlands were reviewed by a certified wetland specialist in your office to verify that there's no construction proposed in the wetland itself, correct?
That's, that's correct. We did flag the wetlands for our verification, which we did, in agreement with the line that's shown on the plan. The two water courses that are on the property are locally regulated by either the Village of Austin or the Village of Briar Cliff Manor, neither of which are DEC regulated. And there are also no flood planes on this project site, at least regulated by FEMA or in the vicinity of the project.
Thanks, Jaime and Joe. Okay, I see a couple more that are up.
Aaron Spring.
All right, Mr. Spring.
Hi, how are you? Aaron Spring, 64 Meadow Road. First, I want to thank the planning board. I know you guys are volunteers, so thank you for your time. I know these meetings go long and, you know, the town does appreciate what you guys do. Just have a few clarification questions if you don't mind. One, I heard something about they have to approve a wetlands permit. Who, who is they and when does that happen?
You want me to?
Yeah, Jaime, you can answer that.
So the wetlands, under our wetlands law here in the Village of Austin, we have two types of wetlands permits. One is approved by the planning board with a referral to the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Council. They have to opine on the wetlands application and then it comes back to the planning board. The other one is an administrative permit for very small applications, like if you're putting up a deck or things like that. That's an administrative application that is processed by the building department. So in this instance, the planning board is the ultimate deciding body and will make a decision after getting it referred out to the Environmental Advisory Council.
Okay, so the village board would not be the ones approving that?
Planning board, not the village board.
Okay. And speaking of EAC, from what I understand, there was a comprehensive report done by the EAC before the pandemic. How was that factored in? Is it being factored in? Did the EAC get a chance to submit their findings to this project?
That report was made before the current wetlands law ever took effect. And they have not received a referral yet under the current law. That will likely happen tonight. The planning board will likely refer this application to the EAC for review under the current wetlands law.
Thank you. And then one comment, if I may, I did hear, I'm just looking at the panelists now because I do appreciate her comment. I can't seem to find her. Somebody made a comment about the recent storm and I do appreciate their concerns there. And then somebody else made a comment regarding, it was, you know, once in a thousand years. And while that used to be the case, I have to agree with Mr. Batataria who said that this is climate change at its finest. We're seeing these storms become severe, then they're becoming much worse. And the reality is when you have an acre of forestry and an inch of rainwater goes into that forestry, there's only 750 gallons of runoff. If you then create an acre of concrete and asphalt, you then have 25,000 gallons of runoff with the same inch of rain. So I do ask that we take that, or you take that into consideration as to these storms are becoming more severe, they're becoming more frequent. And how is that going to affect the runoff around these wetlands? And I think that's all my comments for tonight. And again, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your volunteerism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. All right, I see one other hand.
A Farrell.
Hello, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Appreciate it. Okay, so I'm Alexandra Farrell. I live at 78 Walden Road. I appreciate the time. And just have a couple of concerns I also wanted to address with the board. I've come to the board, this board, the planning board, the zoning board several times in the past two years in opposition of this project. To summarize my concerns, I think some have already been brought up as far as traffic, where the new lot is located. Specifically, the placement of the driveway in terms of the site distance. The size of the project proposing units on a really small piece of land, clearly squeezing in as much as possible in an area that, you know, is not large enough for this kind of structure. We've had other projects where the structure is too big for the land proposed and they haven't ended well. And the environmental impact of the building, which it sounds like will be referred to the appropriate board for review. And I hope that will be considered as you're thinking through this project as this new board. Another piece I did want to bring up is, I brought this up before, the application is still stating a project location of 8189 South Highland Avenue. This project and the proposed entrance, as you've seen, is on Walden Road. We've requested several times in past meetings, both planning and zoning, that the application be amended or there be some kind of notification to accurately reflect the actual location of this property, which is on Walden Road. It's not on South Highland Avenue. The townhouses as proposed would significantly change the character of the neighborhood. This neighborhood is surrounded by single family and two family homes. South Highland and Birch Brook Manor, as it stands now, is multifamily and it is surrounded by those types of buildings, but it is on South Highland Avenue. This project proposed is not. The entrance would be on Walden Road, the project is on Walden Road. And not including the actual address of the proposed property, it's misleading to the public, to be honest. And I've spoken to many residents in the surrounding area immediately of this project who do not understand where this project is because it's marketed as South Highland Avenue. It comes across as dishonest, I'll be honest. And like someone's trying to hide something or not be truthful about where this project actually is located. The for sale sign that is on the property right now is on Walden Road. The lot is listed on Walden Road. But the project, application and all the paperwork is listed as South Highland. I don't think this is fair to the residents of the village, specifically the ones that will be immediately impacted by this environmentally and in all the other ways if this project moves forward. So to that point, you know, I do want to say I genuinely appreciate living in a community where we have people like yourselves who volunteer to be on boards and be the voices in the room when decisions like this are being made. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak as a resident. I don't take that for granted. But the process has just been incredibly disappointing. I mean, we come to these meetings, say the same concerns over and over. Nothing changes. It seems that things just go on and get approved. And we've gone through other avenues within the village and tried to speak with other people and try to engage in an interactive process. And there's never any follow-ups. You got to run around if who can give you an answer and it's been quite frustrating. So to summarize, you know, I'm really concerned as a resident of the, of the village and the direction the village is taking and the overdevelopment that's happening, not only with this project, but others as well. I love Austin and I love living here, but I don't want to see it go in the direction that it's going. So what I'd ask respectfully of the board is, you know, please consider all of these points. Make further research on this property, on this project. Think about what's truly in the best interest of the village and its residents. I mean, have any of the members of the board been to the property to see it or take a look? I mean, I think you'd be surprised at what you see versus what's being proposed. I'm just asking that you pause, consider these points that have been brought up, consider, you know, the environmental impact that I know will be reviewed next week. Just consider the voices you're hearing in the village. Just stop and consider these points before you just say yes to another development in the village. Thank you for your time and I'll pass it along to my husband.
May I speak now? Shane Farrell, 78 Walden Road. Just a few comments, some questions as well, maybe for the board if they can even answer them or anything. Do we know how large this building is? Length, maybe width or height? Does anybody on the board know that?
Jaime, I don't know if that, that massing information is available.
Yeah, all of that information is available on the documents that are posted on the agenda. So yes.
So those are accurate. Okay, um, so if I do the math right, that's 100, it's about 165.8 feet long. It's two, two buildings of, or two units of 41 and five and a half inches and three at 27.8 inches. According to our code, the MF1 zone only allows for 160 foot building. That's under 270 11 MF1 multifamily bulk requirements. No building shall exceed 160 feet in length. If those are accurate, that's a little bit of a problem to us, concerning. Also, I never heard about a unit being fully ADA compliant. I know that's New York State code when you're over four units. And I don't know if that's been brought up, if anybody can clarify that for us. I see there's a snow shelf located right on the edge where that park area is. I'm concerned about the contaminants for that snow shelf, the salt or any other melting materials getting absorbed right into the wetlands. So I would like to look into that. We live right there where the Brook is, where the stream is. And I know Paul, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, I got to find you, Sezic, stated that it was an intermittent stream. Well, if anybody's read the EAC report, and I hope you have, you can't make a decision without doing that. It is stated that it has been disproven claim that the stream was immediate. And the applicant's remissive to acknowledge any additional non-point source water pollution would arise from this residential development. On the EAC report, states that they are very concerned with the effects of this project will have on the local environment quality. The applicant has proposed constructing this complex on a small 1.2 acre parcel. Okay, so I mean, yeah, if you haven't read it, this is really concerning. Dozens of homes will be affected upstream, downstream. The last storm, I was worried about our property. We were saved by that man. We were saved by no development there. The water was able to spread out and not build. Martin, Martin Road is probably the luckiest place because of that. And it's spread well beyond the wetlands and well beyond what you guys are proposing. That's why there's a buffer. A mitigation plan is just one little piece of the puzzle. The buffer is there for a reason and it needs to be adhered to. Please read the EAC report is just, I mean, is really negative for this project. I know some things have been addressed, but there's no, there's no independent studies. There's been nothing to address these and to show that there is any safety in this project for all the houses that are going to be it. They're concerned about bottlenecking of the water, which is absolutely true. And I couldn't get a picture because it was unsafe to even go out there during the storm. But like I said, it was, it was just astounding how lucky we are that there was no building going on there. I'm not saying that that property, you know, they don't have a right to build there, but this, this is too big of a footprint, too much for this little area with wetlands on both sides, two full active streams on both sides. I'm just concerned about some of the dishonest comments that are being made that have been disproven. The EAC has been out here. They have seen the problem. And please, before you make any decisions, read those reports and put yourself in the shoes of us that we're here, that we're concerned and we're just being ignored. I know people are making decisions that are friends with each other and have connections. I understand. Not, you know, we're not naive to those things, but we also got to look out for us, the residents, the independent people. Small boys, please, take your time and please, please, this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gerber. I do want to just make one comment in response. I want everyone to be reassured that the village staff has a very thorough review of the drawings and the zoning, the zoning review. And, and so the, you know, some of the comments that you, that you made there, I want you to, to know that any zoning variances or any kind of bulk requirements that need to be met, that, that's a separate process from this one, but that, that is undertaken. So I don't want, I don't want to leave that one open. We've heard lots of comments. I don't know, do we, especially regarding, you know, the wetlands and to all of those comments, that there is further review coming. You know, there is a new law that was passed in the village that requires that to be further reviewed by a different body from us. Ultimately, as Jaime pointed out, we will take the information as from the EAC as an advisory group to make a final decision on the appropriate. But that's not happening right now. We still need to get their further guidance, not just the letter that was divided to a prior board at an earlier time. So, so this is still a process that's, that's ongoing and this project will be, will be looked at closely. Do we, is there anybody else, I guess Jaime, from the public, I don't see any of their hands up. Are there any other emails or comments that were submitted to you for the record?
Let me check my email right now. No, no, I don't see anything from the email. I, if I could just make one quick comment, I don't, I don't read it back and forth here about the last individual who spoke, they mentioned that they were friends, they're making decisions, you know, connections with their friends. I just want to at least reassure you from the staff side, that is absolutely 100% unequivocally not true. That is, there's, and honestly, from a staff perspective, I don't appreciate the assertion that we're working on this in secret, you know, making deals with friends. So. For the record, that was offensive to make that comment, to be honest with you. Like that, I found that quite offensive.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks. Okay, I think at this point we can adjourn the public hearing on this, on this matter. Is there a motion to do so?
Michael Aronson, motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Eric Talbot. There was one comment that came in through the question and answer. I should read this. I don't want to leave.
All right, well, we haven't, we have, we've yet to close the hearing.
Okay. The comment is from John Gala and it says that Macy Walden Holbrook is already a poorly regulated, somewhat dangerous intersection. Are there plans to establish an always stop sign or something else there? Adding a multifamily driveway there seems quite risky with the current road management.
All right, and I will say, I think I made this comment before, you know, one of the things we're looking at right now is separate, these are site plan specific questions. Um, that site plan was vetted and reviewed and those, those very items were looked at very closely by the village engineer, by this board. Um, and there were mitigation measures put in, in place to address those and traffic studies that were also conducted. Uh, but we're not here to, you know, that, that's a site plan's, is a separate issue. Um, so, or, or do we have any other, a- any other comments in that, in that?
Um, Nina's hand is raised, that's the.
Oh, sorry, Nina.
Sorry, that was a mistake. I will lower it.
Very good. All right, dude, um, at this point, I, I, I would like to, uh, I think, I think it makes sense to adjourn this, this hearing portion of this. Uh, can we have a motion for such?
Michael Aronson, motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Bobby, I think you're seconding, but you're muted.
I, I second Bobby, Bobby Bowker during the public hearing.
All right, any objections? No objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent, the public hearing is adjourned. Um, okay, so there are two kind of items that we, that we need to, before we close this out. I think the first one, um, Amanda motion that kind of signaled that a moment ago. Um, which is that uh, we have a, um. Well, I'm sorry, I'm going back through my notes and they're really long. Um, yeah, there's a, so there is a negative declaration on, on this project and, you know, one. Um, thought is to amend the negative declaration to incorporate some of the changes that have been made to the project with regards specifically to additional wetland mitigation measures. Um, so is that, is that something we need to, to, is that just really instructions to staff? Is that a motion or?
Yeah, I think that if you want to discuss it at all as a board, maybe um, members of the board aren't, aren't super familiar with that as a process, that's fine, but it would require. You as a board, um, taking, making a motion to direct staff, uh, professional staff to, um. To review the neglect deck and make appropriate amendments, uh, to take the changes into account. But I can, um, let me, I'm sorry, the dog, the dog is acting up, so I'm a little bit flustered. Um, but anyway, when you have a negative declaration on file as we do. Gosh, um, the, before you, before you make any sort of an approval on an action, if there has been a project modification or a change in circumstances. Compared to what was previously addressed, um, then you can still conclude that the action will have no significant adverse environmental impacts, which is. What you did previously by making your negative declaration. You can still come to that conclusion, but you can say, well, we're going to amend the neglect deck to take into account the fact that A, the village has. Since we made this negative declaration past a wetlands law that now requires. Wetlands mitigation matters and we want to have that reflected in our negative declaration now. And it's really just kind of, um, being thorough in your environmental assessment.
Any questions on that? I know that's. Okay.
I'm sorry, Seth, I would just say, given the concerns that have been raised. Do we know what these additional measures are that we would include in the neck deck? And I would be supportive of amending the neck deck to include additional mitigation.
So, um, here I can. Basically, it would really just be not, not much new information, really just saying, okay, just probably a couple new sentences. Cause the negative declaration wasn't a very long document. It was all of your environmental assessment forms, parts one, two, and three completed. And then there was a supplemental part three that explained why you didn't come to any, why you didn't find any significant adverse environmental impacts. And we would just add a little bit of language likely into that. That explains since, you know, the time of, you know, us adopting this negative declaration, this and this have happened. And basically just supplementing it a little bit to reflect the changed circumstances. Um, but this, this would not be done without your review and approval. Your motion tonight would really just be to direct Jaime and I and, and Joe Tramelli to look at the negative declaration. See what additions or amendments might be appropriate in light of the circumstances. And then I think back to you for your review and approval.
And, and I think further to Michael's question, because there, you know, I, I think our next action here will be to refer this out to the EAC. You know, depending on any, any feedback that the EAC gives that, that we may decide to ask on the applicant. You know, obviously, we would want to make sure that any amendment to the negative declaration ultimately takes into account that process as well. So I, I, I want to be sure that we're. You know, that, that we're not putting the cart for the horse here, that we're.
Right.
This is just, that, that we're not, we're not approving an amendment to the negative declaration. We're asking staff to look into this, to get that process started. So we're not, you know.
Yeah.
Delayed.
That's right.
All right, uh, can I just ask a real quick question? I want to clarify, the, the last motion was to close the public hearing or to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
All right, you do have another hand raised. Um, so I don't know how you want to deal with that.
I mean, we, we, we did give time and we've, we've spent a lot of time on this topic tonight. Um, and we are, it's adjourned, this public hearing will be reopened and will be, we will be reopening this at our, that the next time this item comes before this board. Um, I, I am a little bit concerned about going back and forth on this right now. Um.
They can also email, if they can email me, um, actually, they should probably email Jamie Kane, um, but they can email me or Jamie Kane. Um, my email is again, J Martinez at the Village of Austin, at Village of Austin dot org. Um, and Jamie Kane is J Kane, J K A N E at Village of Austin dot org. So you can email those, those comments will be forwarded to the. Um, planning board and they will also be posted to the agenda. So the public can uh, see them as well there.
And, and I see Jaime, that your email is on the uh, comment list as well, or in the chat list.
Yes.
Um, okay, uh, so I, I, I want to move forward with, um. The, the first of the two motions that we're discussing, which would be a um, instruction to staff to review. Um, for amendments uh, to the negative declaration to keep the negative declaration. Um, contemporary with, with any of the current changes related, related to the wetlands, new wetlands law.
Um, Nina Aaron, motion for staff to look at amending. The um, negative declaration in line and taking into account the um, new updated wetlands laws.
I second that motion.
All right, um, I think we can do a rule call for this one.
Okay, Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Bowker.
Hi.
David Chow. David, you're on mute. Jaime.
Hi.
Thank you, David. Uh, Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
Isabel, because we have a quorum, full board tonight, you don't need to, to do any voting. Okay.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so then the next item would be to make a referral, um, to the EAC. Uh, for comment and advice on this uh, application, wetlands application.
Um, Michael Aronson, motion to refer this action to the EAC for review under the wetlands law.
Second.
Eric Talbot, uh, I second the motion.
And the rule call.
Uh, Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Bowker. David Chow.
Hi.
Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
Seven zero, both motion.
David, uh, your, your microphone is producing a lot of static, so I'm going to mute you when you're not talking, okay?
All right, thanks. Okay, um, so I think we are, can move on now with the agenda. Um, Jaime, maybe just reminding, because I know that we made a, a change up top and I'm sure we're, we're sticking with that, so.
Yeah, we're on one thirty-six, uh, forty Croton Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you, everybody. Yep, yep. Okay, one thirty-six Croton Avenue. That was, uh, just, you know, for reference, that was originally, um. That, this was originally new, new business, um, item D on the agenda that was posted, um, online, just for everyone's clarity. This is a, um, planning board and V A R, um, so this is a new project on Croton Avenue and uh. I don't know, who, who do we have here to, to speak, uh, and give, give us a presentation?
We have a whole lot of people here. I'm trying to get to the list and.
All right.
Uh, we have right now, we have Michael Zarin, Jaclyn Tyler, um, is Franz Lackey with you? Uh, Jaclyn?
I believe he's, yes, if, if he's on, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Gina Martini, uh, is here, I see John Frye is here. Um. Is, um, Joe Apicella or, or Rela Poliano here?
Joe should be here, yes.
Uh, I'm not seeing so. Is he possibly?
Gina, do you have an update on Joe? Is he on? Do you know? Oh, we can't hear you. You're not muted, though.
He should be calling in any second. He was on.
Okay, are, um, are you ready to go?
Should we?
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys have enough, have your team there assembled, then um, I think it's, is, are you guys going to be sharing your screens?
Yes, let's, I, I was gonna start off with the introduction, so why don't I begin? Um, and uh, well, uh, if Joe's here, I will defer to him and I will refer to him afterwards. Otherwise, I'll go right to uh, Jackie and John. So. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Zarin, the law firm Zarin and Stymets. Um, and we're here with, uh, our team is, that we just introduced, uh, John Frye, Jaclyn Tyler from Nexus Creative Design. Uh, Gina Martini from V H B, uh, Frank Lackey from Sessi Engineering. I don't think John Canning from Kimley Horn is there. Um, and uh, so. Uh, should I continue?
Please.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, we're here for, uh, to take advantage of your process where you allow an applicant to come in. For what's known as an informal session before we make our full final application. Uh, and it's for a, uh, some of you might know, it's for a mixed use, uh, affordable senior. Uh, development at one thirty-six and one thirty-eight, one forty Croton Avenue. Um, it's a unique site in, in many ways. It's also, I believe, one of the first. Form-based zoning projects that's come before you since the enactment of the form-based standard. So, uh, we're excited. Uh, like I said, we've, we've enacted, we've put together, I think, a pretty formidable team. Uh, it's good to get back. I know for probably the wrong reasons on remote and have the dogs could participate in these sessions again. Um, it's always nice to hear the barking. They're usually the only people that are, or only things that agree with me typically. Um, so, um, the purpose of tonight's session, and be about a ten, fifteen minute presentation, an hour part. Was to just introduce you to the project, um, solicit, um, any initial preliminary comments that you might have. We've already met with staff and are making certain adjustment, design adjustments. Uh, based on some of the feedback we've heard, but we would like to obviously, uh, hear from you in this informal session. And then we will come back the next time we meet with a resubmission, which will be our formal final application, site plan application. With, um, all the complete, uh, additional documents. Um, at that time, I'm sure the public, uh, will be wanting to participate. We will welcome at that time. Uh, their comments and input, participation, uh, we find all our projects value, those valuable. Uh, this is a, the developer here is McQuestion Development LLC. Uh, rel-, a well-respected and experienced developer in this, this platform, the affordable housing and senior platform, I think. Um, uh, with a proven reputation around the county. So, um, as I said before, I was going to. Um, Joe Apicella is now here, please, I see something, please let me in and I'm going to. Jaime, are you letting him in?
Yeah, I just, um, I just brought him in.
Great, thanks. I had a song I was going to sing till Joe came and, you know, a couple of things, but here he is.
No need for, no need for song, Michael.
All right, so let me, uh, turn it over to Joe Appcello, one of the principals in McQuestion Development, and after him. Uh, after a short presentation, the, um, the architects will share their screen and, and, and go through some of the, uh. Relevant elements of the project. It's good, good to be here and back in Austin again. So, Joe.
Hey, good evening, members of the board, of the planning board. My name is Joseph Apicella. Uh, and I'm managing director of McQuestion Companies and a partner on this and all of our projects throughout Westchester, New York City, particularly Brooklyn and the Bronx. Um, I'm joined tonight, Michael, I don't know if you've made introductions about our team.
I did, Joe, very briefly.
Great. Having said that, uh, I'll cut right to where we want to be, and that is give a very brief overview of the proposal. But give you a real flavor, a real sense of why we're so excited about this particular project. We think it fills a, a tremendous void, not only in the village, but regionally. This site, as you probably are well familiar, is about thirty-four thousand square feet, give or take. Uh, NC two zone with a form-based Croton Avenue overlay. Uh, initiative applied here as part of the two thousand twenty-one, uh, comprehensive plan objectives. So. We're looking to utilize something that has not been utilized before, and that's your own, uh, participatory form-based zone, uh, in the comprehensive plan. Um, there's the primary frontage, as you probably knows, on Croton Avenue. Uh, we have Watson Avenue to the east and we have, to the west, we have, um, Prospect. Um, this is a former nursery site, which is also the, uh, the staging for construction materials and the like. My initial testing has indicated that this is very likely to be, uh, to rise to the level of a brownfield cleanup site. So we view this not only as reclaiming what is a nice storefront area in a commercial district. And what could be very transient for our residents, but also reclamation on it from an environmental perspective. We have great expertise at dealing with brownfields. Our company has just completed a brownfield project. In, uh, Mount Vernon, New York, at the Mount Vernon West Train Station. We work very closely with all of the property managers. And engineers at the New York State D E C. So we're not afraid of the cleanup. We think it can be an asset to reclaim this site. And really to have a uniquely walkable location for the, the market set that we're looking to employ here. And that is senior affordable housing. To be specific, the program we're going to engage, uh, through the state H F A Housing. Uh, agency is a sixty-two and older model. So residents will be involved in a sixty-two age limitation here, age restriction. Um, that will do two things. One, meet a, an important market set as people are aging in place these days. It will allow people mass transit, there's transportation. It will allow people mass transit. There's transportation right along Croton Avenue, bus stops and the like. And there's also merchants and stores close by that are accessible. So we think this is a, a great opportunity. It also, it doesn't reduce, it eliminates the burden of school age cost, school age children, because 62 and over are not necessarily having children in the local school system. So we see this as a win-win for the community, or else we wouldn't be this far into this project. Seventy-seven units in total, one of which will be designated for the building superintendent. It's a mix of studios and one-bedrooms. There's 30 studio units, 46 one-bedrooms. Oh, we have one, two-bedroom unit dedicated to the super. The residential amenity package on this, to be clear, is indistinguishable from market rate housing. Let me repeat that. It's indistinguishable from a design perspective. What you see on the street will be as beautiful as any market rate project, and I'm familiar with some of the newer projects in Austin. And you're also gonna have an amenity package that includes computer lounge, mailroom. We're gonna have the Amazon hub here, because everybody shops online these days, and we're we're painfully aware of that in terms of storage and how we store securely people's mail and deliveries. There's gonna be a bike storage and a bike room. There's gonna be other incidental private storage for the residents, many of whom are, that are coming out of single-family homes and need that additional space. There's gonna be a beautiful fitness center, private laundry, computer lounge. This is in no way looking or smelling like a low-income project. It will in every way, shape and form be indistinguishable from market rate or high-end housing. Also, at the street level, so critical is part of the downtown plan to activate the at-grade area as your planning director has indicated to us. So we have about 1,600 square feet of corner retail at the corner of Croton and Watson, and our, our engineer and Nexus Creative, our architects will show you specifically where that is shortly. About 1,700 square feet of flexed community space at Croton and Prospect. And we're looking at integrating. We've gotten to talk about this, and we've given this a lot of thought. Maybe having some youth or education programs at that corner might be healthy integration with the senior project. So we have some ideas, some themes with that. We'd work with your, your Board of Education as well to try and have that come to fruition. We think it'd make for more robust, active community. From an environmental standpoint, we do nothing but energy star appliances. This building will be, we are, our objective is for it to be a lead silver building. So we want it to be, from an engineering and energy standpoint, a sustainable building. We think this is very important to build a sustainable building in Austin. There's gonna be some outdoor civic space with a pocket park and space amenities as well. Our parking right now, which you know is always an issue, we're at one-to-one, one space per dwelling unit or thereabouts. Very close. My empirical data from other projects that are similar tell me that that is more than enough for a 62 and older project, because most of the residents are a little bit older than 62 on a 62 and older project, and one car typically is more than enough. And we have empirical data. We plan on sharing, if we haven't already, with our planner Gina Martini. So we have a comprehensive team. I'll wrap it up. Comprehensive team. We're excited about the project. We want to take what was a bit of an eyesore in traffic congestion with trucks pulling up, what have you, and replace all of that with we think a more placid, responsible use. That's much needed. The affordability levels we're looking at are 30, 40, and 60% of its average median income. We anticipate participation with the county government on this project, as well as the New York State Housing Finance Agency. I'll turn it back to you, Michael, and/or Nexus Creative.
John or Jaclyn, who's?
Thanks, Joe. Jaclyn Tyler with Nexus Creative. I'm also joined by John Frye from Nexus Creative. We will both be jumping in just to walk you through some of this. I think Joe actually did a great job kind of giving you a overview of the the floor plans. We do have some renderings here, which I believe everybody received. We do have Croton Avenue and Watson, so you, most of you are familiar with this site, I believe. We are presented with a challenging site, but it also lent to some great opportunities to transition ourselves from Croton Avenue back towards the residential that's located behind this lot. So as Joe mentioned, we are looking to populate Croton Avenue with retail on this corner and some type of community space down at the corner of Croton Avenue and Prospect, really creating that engaging environment between our building and between the downtown area as you walk along Croton Avenue. We've kept the residential units to the backside, so that as you step back, we, we do become integrated with the residential area in the rear. We do have, as Joe mentioned, 77 total units, with a number of those being studio apartments and a portion of those being the bedroom, the one-bedroom. I'm gonna flip back to the floor plans real quick, just to kind of walk you through those quickly, just because we'd really like to hear from you all tonight and get some feedback in regards to the project. We have received the comments so far, and just to, I think that, Michael, you've already hit on this, but we are going to be looking at a couple of the design elements. We've been working with the traffic consultants to discuss the intersection here at Croton, along with Prospect, so the in and out. So we're looking at the traffic circulation. That's something we'll be evaluating for this next submission. We're looking at this corner and how we incorporate our buildable area on, on both corners, actually. So our next plan may have some revisions in regards to that, but we will be coming back with this. Our intention is to come back with the same number of units. So just to clarify, as you, as you slope down towards Prospect, you'll see that we, you know, this area here is our, the commercial, the fitness, which is only for residents currently. This utility's basement, although you see it here, that is located underground because of the slope of the site. As you gain to the first, up to the first floor, the retail becomes on-grade, and you will be able to access the residences from this area of Croton Avenue. And as you go up, you'll see our typical floor plates, which is a mix of the one-bedroom and studios, as we mentioned earlier. I would, unless John Frye has any other comments, I would like to open it up to the board so that we have time to receive your comments. I know you have a really full agenda this evening.
The only, the only notions I would add are the building massing, the faceting of the facade, et cetera, were really born from form-based notions, design notions. When we set out on this project, it was actually prior to the form-based overlay zone elements being cemented into the comprehensive plan. And so there was a merger point several months ago where we felt like we had set the compass points in the right direction, and we made refinements as we merged headlong into the form-based overlay design and zoning requirements. We know that we still have refinements left. We know we are navigating the, essentially the initial launch point for the village and for applicants, and so we're excited about it. And we're continuing to review, process, and refine.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, thank you guys for the, for the presentation. There's, you know, I've got lots of questions that, I think, all out right now. I'm certainly very curious about the, kind of the two corners that, you know, are the, you know, the most active portions of the site, like the community space. I'm not sure I totally understand exactly what that is and how that will work. The corner of Watson and, and Croton with that commercial spaces too, and the massing, and just kind of seeing how that works with the sidewalk. It seems like the site is, is very open. At the entrance to the building and outside the community space, there's lots of kind of green space and cut corners, and it seems like you're a little tighter over there where you're proposing the commercial area. That, that's one area that I would like to kind of see a little bit more development or understand a little bit better. You alluded already to the traffic studies that you've done. I will, I'm two blocks away from this site, use these, you know, a lot of people turn up and down on Prospect and Watson is, so I think, looking at the traffic there is, is gonna be really, really critical to our review. I know, those, those are just a couple of my thoughts off the bat. I don't know what the board members, what you're looking at or thinking about when you see this.
Yeah, this is Bobby Becker. Thanks for the presentation, and Jaclyn. Couple quick questions. How big is the lot? Is it a half-acre lot, this parcel?
Point eight acres.
Eight acres, okay. And the, who, who do we see as the ideal deal tenant? Obviously, 62, is it gonna be a downsizer or down, people selling their homes and downsizing it? Jaclyn or John, can I ask you that?
I was deferring to Jo Apicella, but I think in a nutshell, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Downsizers, transitioning baby boomer population, sort of a bandwidth of market.
I'm in agreement there, but do we think the units?
We have Jo Apicella here. He's, he, he seems to fall into the attendee side, so I just brought him back over to the, as a panelist. So, Joe, if you wanna speak.
Joe, you're on mute?
Okay, I'm no longer on mute.
Good job.
Joe, did you hear the question?
Yeah, I heard the question. I've fallen to the good side now, Jaime. The can you hear me now, guys? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, the market we see for this appears to be, these are, these are empty nesters. The individuals of, you know, on fixed incomes, social security and a small pension are looking to have a grand-new place that they can come and go from. That's what this is. And yet, we wanted to have a nice amenity package and have enough spatially, be large enough that people don't feel cooped up. So that's, that's what we're going for. Done this elsewhere, very successful. But we know that people in communities in Austin and the surrounding areas are looking, rather than moving out, they would love to have an easier lifestyle. They can come and go, and the building super take, changing the light bulbs for them.
And Joe, other properties that you have done this, do you get any pushback on the unit side? So my quick thoughts is looking at the size, 5,500, low 700 square foot, is that too small for the tenants? Maybe go, go, then reduce the unit count as an option? What are your thoughts on?
You know what, Bobby? A lot of them, a lot of these units are, are bought by, leased, of course, by single individuals. They're, like, like my mom, who's in a similar situation over in Jefferson Village. They're small, one-bedrooms. They don't want larger because it's harder to keep up. And there's a lot of widows and widowers that can't afford, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 a month elsewhere. And this fits a nice little market niche for these people, and they have, and they, they have the ability to get out, to go to the gym, they can go downstairs, they can go for a walk, they could take an Uber and go where they want to go. We even discussed the possibility of a shuttle back and forth to the waterfront and to the downtown, various areas on the down. Something that we have, we're germinating but have not decided.
Yeah, that makes especially if the target is gonna start 60% AMI. They'll be content, I think. You're right. Agreed.
These are not people coming out of 4,000 square foot homes.
Thank you.
Okay. Michael Aronson, I have a couple of questions. I mean, just to, again, follow up on the the end user. I'm assuming that the units that are at 30 and 40% of AMI are the studios and not the one-bedrooms?
No, it's, we, I'm sorry, who am I speaking to?
Michael Aronson.
Oh, hi, Michael.
Hi.
We, we can't, if you will, discriminate by segregating certain unit types for certain AMIs. So what we do is we blend them across the, the unit mix. And I don't have that information today, but I can give you a sense of what that is in the near future, what units are at, would be a 30%, what percentage of units, unit types would be at 40% and 60%. Again, these are people in retirement that are making, here in Westchester, you know, $40,000 in retirement. So it's $60,000 in retirement. These are not, you know, the poor, the very poor. But it's kind of a, a market set that gets lost. It's like, where do they go? You know, they're not poor, but they can't pay $3,000 or $4,000 a month in rent. So that's really what this is.
Right, okay. A couple of other questions. In terms of the parking, I wasn't entirely clear from the site plan. It looked like there were, so all of the spaces are underneath the structure, so there's several levels of parking, or how is the parking achieved?
John, could you address that, please?
Yeah, I see, yeah, we have, so you can see where this red car is here. There, there is one level of parking along here, and I'll switch to this, to the floor plans. But we have one entrance, and this goes back to what we're working out with the traffic studies as well. So on the Prospect, you would come in on Prospect, and you have one full level, but yes, it is all behind. It's all enclosed within the building, so there's no exposed parking on the site. And then as you travel up and come along Watson, you would enter the, the second upper, and we consider this kind of like a half-level of parking, where we also have units on the west side.
Okay.
That's accessible from, from Watson?
Correct, yes. So this is off of Watson, and the lower level is accessed off of Prospect.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And right now, Croton on the, on the first level as well.
Okay. I mean, there's, there's a lot here, obviously, to digest, and I'm sure we'll have more questions later. I did just sort of want to make a comment about the elevations, the renderings. So it's, it's presenting a very bucolic picture of Croton Avenue, and I, I feel like it would be a little bit, it looks so green and lovely. It would really be helpful, actually, to see this project within a more realistic context in terms of what's across the street and what's on Watson and Prospect would be helpful.
We're actually halfway there for you, Michael. So we've been meeting with Jaime, and we, we are in the process right now of dropping the building into photos. So at our next presentation, we will have those ready for you, where you'll be seeing the building mixed in with all of the existing surroundings.
Okay, great, thank you.
I do want to mention, we have with us today Jonathan Martin from BFG Planning. He is the, one of the authors of the Form-Based Code that was recently passed. And he, once, I think the team from McQuestion has done, wanted to give him some time to talk a little bit about how the Form-Based Code works, and ultimately to set up a work session to kind of go over the broader strokes of the Form-Based Code, because it is quite different from what this board is accustomed to going through.
Yep, I agree.
That would be super helpful, definitely.
If you can do that. Are there any other, any other questions from the board before we push into that? Jonathan's here now?
I am. I'm right here. Would you like me to talk a little bit about this then?
Yeah, I think we just get a, a brief primer, and then we'll, we'll kind of go into more detail in a, in a work session.
Sure. Well, thanks, everybody, for being here, and I have submitted a memo to staff at a request for an evaluation of the project and the supplemental drawings and the package that was submitted. And I think that was submitted on September 13th, and so I understand there will be some revisions in that memo. I evaluated what that package was and the design as we saw it tonight relative to the Form-Based Code. But to, you know, within that memo, one of the things that is difficult, maybe are different about Form-Based But to, you know, within that memo, one of the things that is difficult, maybe are different about Form Based Codes relative to sort of conventional zoning or what we call Euclidean zoning is that Form Based Codes, you know, really operate first and foremost off of street types. And when we were developing this code for Croton Avenue, there was a tremendous amount of mapping and measuring, trying to, if you will, figure out what the DNA is of Croton Avenue and from there develop appropriate street types. And so within the C A overlay, there are two street types. And so first step is really to figure out what street type you have in and around any project site. The second sort of caveat, and I think this throws some people, but it's very typical on how Form Based Codes work, is that within a street type, you get a selection of lot frontage types. And so if you look at the overall overlay code, that includes the village center area and Croton Avenue, you'll see there's about ten different frontage types. Those are not available to every street in any of the overlay, the two overlay districts, the one for downtown and the one for Croton Avenue. And they're available from that, those ten. Each street type frontage is designated certain lot frontage types. So for example, this gets a bit complicated. However, let me see if I can.
And just the biggest, maybe an example from what we're looking at, and then we'll go into more detail next next time.
Yeah, for this, there are two street frontage types. There is a neighborhood frontage type and a neighborhood commercial frontage type. And within those, there are five different building or lot frontage types that you can use as well as one additional in the neighborhood commercial, which allows for storefront. So for example, in reviewing reviewing this, there is a forecourt lot frontage type that is allowable along both the Croton Avenue frontages and the Warren and the Prospect Avenue frontages. So that the parameters of, for example, the forecourt lot frontage seems to fit very well with what the applicant is showing in along Croton Avenue. On the sides, which are really quite far setback compared to the front, especially at the corners of the building, I tried to look at that and say, well, what frontage type would best fit what the applicant is showing? And that ended up being a yard frontage type within the code. And, you know, within that, many of the parameters were sort of met. There were a few things that were not, you know, completely up to code, and that could be a redesign or a variance request. But my job was really just to look at that building and try and match it to what the overlay code would actually permit.
Excellent. Thank you. So I do definitely think we'll have to look much more closely at this item. Obviously, it's new for everybody here. But I appreciate that input, Jonathan. Okay. Unless there are any other specific questions for the board, I think this was a really helpful presentation. This is obviously a a big project and there will be lots to go through moving forward, but it's great to kind of get a little bit of a head start. So thank you guys very much.
We appreciated the feedback and we will we will come back with a adjustments and a full application and look forward to the robust review process and to bring hopefully a quality product to Austin and in particular, the form base. I mean, we really look forward to making your one of your first form base really achieving the spirited intent of like what how much work Austin put into it. Sure, be somewhat of a give and take, but it should be a really productive process, we we hope and expect. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so now we are we are back on agenda for the rest of the meeting. So the next item is Planning Board zero three dash twenty twenty one. This is one seventy three Cedar Lane. And at this point, this application is for a excavation and fill permit. I know we've looked at this before. It's been off the agenda last couple of meetings. We have the team from this project in to give us the overview.
We have the owner, Errol McIntosh, here. I'm trying to promote the panelist, but doesn't appear to be coming in. And then let me see who is the architect. I'm trying to see if I can find them here. Selma Antoine, who is here? Believe that's it from their team, but. Selma, you are now a panelist.
Am I supposed to be a panelist? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that you're here and you're we're ready for your, just to give us the overview. So welcome. And if you could just tell us about your project, your application.
Yes, okay. My name is Selma Antoine. Yes, good evening, planning board, and thank you for having us. I'm the architect and I'm here with Errol McIntosh. He's on mute. You could unmute him. But what we're here for is an approval from you to build a four foot high retaining wall at the rear of the property at the toe of a very steep slope. Can I share? Yes.
Errol has to unmute himself if he wants to join.
You can see my screen.
Okay, I'm here. See your screen. Thank you.
Yeah, so the wall is at the rear of the property, as I was saying, and it's approximately hundred and ten feet long and four feet high. And we're trying to also stabilize the grade, the steep slope grade at the back by adding some coniferous shrubs about approximately ten to fifteen feet tall when they're mature. Just blow this up a bit so you could see the entire area that's going to be disturbed is approximately eight thousand four hundred square feet. That's including the entry entryway, which is this, the red arrows depict the construction entry site, the access point, and the eight thousand four hundred square feet includes all of that area. I'll show you a section to show the steepness of the slope. Previously, before I was hired by Errol, there was an existing retaining wall being built, which collapsed due to the back or the hitting the wall, and it wasn't designed properly or built properly. This shows you the street, the section through the entire site from the street. The residence here and the existing is an existing four foot high wall, which is about nine feet to the back of the property. There's an existing deck there as well. And this shows the section where we're building the walls at the very toe of the slope. It continues a little further down the property, but we didn't want to affect as much of the property as as limited level of disturbance. So we are asking for an approval to do the the cut and fill is actually to just provide the adequate strengthening from the mesh as required by the the crib wall. It's a block wall. And a fence on the wall. That's pretty much what we're asking for. I'll just, the elevation just shows the wall at the bottom of the slope, the existing wall, existing four foot high wall, and I just have some included some details of the silt fence around the stockpiling of the soil at the bottom, and we're also going to provide some protection of the existing slope by including a erosion control blanket. We did receive the Keller Session Report, and I tried to address as many of the the questions raised, except for the amount of cut and fill. That's what I'm working on right now. That's the only thing that I haven't done. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Actually, before we go any further, you mentioned the Keller Sessions memo. Joe was with us. Joe, do you have any kind of comments? Or I know you've looked at this a couple a few times at this point.
Sure. We haven't had a chance to look at the revised plans. We just received them this afternoon. But from our standpoint, from our point of view, you know, the the main concern for us was basically construction access, what this site will look like during construction and how we're going to ensure that it's protected from future erosion. As they mentioned, the prior wall collapsed. There was, you know, earth that came down the hillside with the wall. No, we just want an understanding of how that's going to get cleaned up, restored. I know they're proposing some a line of trees, evergreen trees along the midpoint of that slope. But really just want to make sure that that entire slope, it's steep. It's a it's a one on one slope. And want to make sure that if it is topsoil and seed, it's properly installed, it's protected with erosion blankets or whatever may be required. You know, to ensure that a long term stabilization of that slope. The I guess the other point or question we had, it just seems I don't understand why, maybe you could speak to this, all the staging materials, the construction equipment, the materials for construction are all at the bottom of the hill beyond the proposed wall. It just seems seems like a lot of added disturbance and frankly, made things make things a little more difficult for you to access with the wall being constructed to have all the materials you need at the bottom of the slope below the wall. Just wondering why that can't be moved up to the top.
Yeah, the reason, well, the stockpile soil would be, I would, I guess I'd have to shoot on the on the plan where we're doing the building the wall in stages. So as you go along, maybe I should have them phased in. So as we build the wall, you'd have the stockpile of soil that you're removing to include to put in the mesh. And as that wall gets built, then you refill that soil and compact it. It's going to be done by handheld equipment. Because the steep is so, the slope is so steep. The backhoe getting down there was pretty, is going to be hard. So it's all going to be done by manual labor. So all of these are like the gravel and sand mounds and this existing soil. We're not bringing in any soil from outside. We're going to try and keep as much of this existing soil there. So it would be, I thought it would be counterproductive to bring the soil up here and then bring it back down. So if that makes sense, that's why I was staging it that way. So maybe I should just phase in on how the wall is being built, like as it's being built, we're having these stockpiles of soil.
So those stockpiles are already on site that were part of the initial construction of the wall?
Yes, there are existing block walls already there that actually fell back down there. The gravel they'll have to bring down there to put at the base of the wall. Any of the equipments, you'd have to bring that and bring it back up. I have a storage of here I included based on the report that I sent. And I put in some extra block stockpile up on the top.
Do you have an idea of how far the, when that wall collapsed? The, you know, the debris and the soil, how far that eroded down the hillside? Did it go on to the adjoining property? Do you know?
No, it didn't go down to the adjoining property. It pretty much went down to where we're building the the block wall. So it went flying down to maybe this one. It went past this, like just about here. It did not go beyond that. Yeah, like down to the staging area.
Can you clarify where the original proposed wall that collapsed was?
It was right where the the edge of the seven percent grade was. It was right like about there.
Okay, so fell from there down to there.
Down, yeah.
Is that backhoe still there?
No, they pulled it out.
Board members, any questions?
Just real quick, the adjoining property is residential or?
Yes, it's an S one district or residential.
And is there a fence between the two properties or?
Yes, there's a fence between between both properties, yes.
There's a fence here, right here, along the right side, if you want to say, and I think it ends. I'm not sure there's a, the survey didn't show, I can't remember if it was a wall, the fence further down.
So so the slope of this property ends in the not the backyard, but I mean, I guess it 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 meets up with the backyard of the adjoining property, or is it is it level or it continues to slope in the adjoining property?
No, it's actually where the slope ends, where the the new fence is going to be, that's where it kind of levels off a little bit. And going down that slope is very minimal.
Okay, and is it, would the adjoining property be able to see this retaining wall from their backyard or their?
The way it said, yes, to some some degree. There's a lot of trees and stuff in the back of the surrounding properties.
Okay.
I would note that we're looking at this as a as a cut and fill excavation and fill permit is, you know, it's not an A R V. And I believe the wall is doesn't even require a permit, if I'm not mistaken, because of its height. Jaime, is that?
It doesn't. No, it doesn't. It was only for an excavation. The the wall would have to exceed, I think it's either four feet or five feet. Joe, maybe you can chime in here, but that that's the only instance where you would need that, and it is a four foot high retaining wall.
Yeah, correct. We're only here for the fill.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Amanda, it's okay.
It, I don't think it's a, I don't think Michael's questions were terribly off base, because you know, we've said it before, the the couple of findings you have to make for the permit are one, that the change of grade will not create excessive drainage or erosion conditions, and two, that it will not impair the value of adjoining parcels. So, you know, that's a fair question as far as will adjoining parcels be able to see the wall?
Thank you, Amanda.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how many trees are back there, because the surveyor did not only show the two trees that's on the our property. So probably I could get him to show what's happening on the sides at the adjoining lots.
Yeah, the adjoining lots have trees on their property. On mine, there's really no trees behind the fence going down. There is open a lot with a lot of trees down, you know, below. I'm not sure who owns it. I think the village might own that part of the property. But every everybody is on the side of me. There's nobody in the back of me.
So so in the back of you, meaning the the lot to the west of of this lot, which I'm imagining fronts on Route Nine, is that correct?
Not Route Nine, I think on.
Ogden Road.
Ogden Road, that's correct. Ogden, yes.
You're far enough north. Yeah, I mean, I I don't know what other questions I have on this right now. There are there are no site photos. Are there in this in this package?
I have a comment. I was looking at a Google Earth, and I can see that one seventy three Cedar does not have like a real, like the neighbor is, there isn't a neighbor that is directly on that lot line. There is a property line there, but there's no development. It's it's Ogden Road. It's basically a little bit, what direction is that? It's, excuse me. It appears that there's no neighbor directly to the to the to the west on the south of below the slope, but there is the development down below like a P U D or like a it's like townhouses, and then there's Ogden Road, and there's a house that's that's north of of Mr. McIntosh's property. But they don't appear to share like a sightline in terms of the yard like that. That's all I say.
Yeah, this location map is helpful.
Yeah. So, I mean, Joe, just to go back to you real quick. I mean, I think, you know, in terms of the kind of adverse impact on drainage. the kind of adverse impact on drainage and, and, you know, is there any, you know, what would the impact of drainage, and I know you had some concerns about erosion control on this hill. Um, you know, kind of, at the end of the day, if those erosion control measures are taken, they, you know, build this wall and they, you kind of install the fill, um, in front of the wall, which is what this permit is for. I mean, what, at, you know, is there any, you know, adverse impact that we should be looking at for, you know, out for on this? Or has this now, at this point, been engineered to a degree where you, you have a level of comfort?
Yeah, I think for me primarily, it's, it's erosion controls both during and after construction. Um, you know, that there was, uh, I don't know what the condition of the slope was prior to the wall failure, but, um, you know, certainly, uh, right now, it's exposed earth. Uh, we'd want to get this wall constructed, get the site stabilized, get the hillside vegetated. Uh, the trees will certainly help mitigate some of the stormwater impacts. So, um, you know, as I said, for me, primarily, it's, it's erosion controls and making sure that that's handled properly.
Um, okay, and so, and I know that there is a set of drawings that was, that you received today, which obviously not yet reviewed. So, I mean, you know, I think, you know, looking at this, um, I suppose we could, we actually should open this up to a, to a public hearing. Now's probably a good time to do that. I think, but before, maybe before we go in there, um, just kind of a sense from the board. Um, you know, I, I think that, you know, especially with the construction means and methods and the erosion control measures that, that Joe has been looking at closely, they've made some progress on that, you know? And I, I, I do remain, you know, I am concerned and Joe just pointed out, you know, as this, this thing sits there, kind of empty and, and barren, you know, the risk of, of kind of further damage is something that I want to, yeah, I'm mindful of. Um, so, you know, you know, I, I guess I'm, you know, I don't know if it's, uh, we're, we don't. I think this is something that, that we, we could consider, um, at this point, moving forward with if the conditions in, in Joe's report are met. But, you know, I, we obviously, you know, I think maybe before we get there, we open up a public hearing, and I don't know if there's anybody from the public to, to speak to this.
Seth, you, you don't, you're not required to open a public hearing on an ENF permit, but you can take public comment if you'd like.
Okay. Um, you know, I, just because we've talked about neighbors and we've talked about, uh, kind of impact, it's, I think it'd be a good idea just to see if there's anybody here to speak to this project. Um, does that require, since it's not required, can we, can we ask for public comment or should we ask, or do we need a, a motion to do that?
You don't need a motion. It's just, you can just see if there's anyone here.
Okay. So is there anybody here from the public, uh, who, who wanted to comment on this project before we move forward?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, so, you know, I, I think that, that one way forward at this point would be to, and, and this is, this is my own opinion, and I'm curious to hear what everyone else on the board thinks, would be to, to kind of move forward with this, you know, grant a, uh, you know, a motion to, to grant the permit conditional upon meeting the, the outstanding, um, bullets in, in, uh, Keller Sessions memo.
So Seth, does that mean that you've found, you've made the two findings that there won't be excessive drainage or erosion conditions provided that the applicant meets the conditions in the Keller Sessions memo? And also that they won't, that granting the permit won't impair, you know, values of adjoining parcels, provided that they meet the conditions in the Keller Sessions memo? Does that, like, do you make?
That would, yeah, I mean, that, that is right. Yes, that, that's the way it should be framed, and that, that's certainly the way that I feel, and, and I, you know, there's a kind of aspect of, the sooner this gets done, the better it is for the adjacent properties, so the hill stops sliding into their properties. But, but I'm curious if, you know, what other?
I, I think, you know, that's what you're raising here is kind of a good point. Um, the, the applicant put this project uh, under construction without any permits, and they were stopped, uh, obviously by the building department. The building department said you need an excavation and fill permit, so they can't even remedy the situation. Really, until they have a permit. Uh, I think that, um, this is their chosen method of remedy. They were originally trying to do, I believe, like two separate retaining walls. Uh, they, they scaled back what their project was, um, and they've also made the retained more smaller in order to get under the requirement for a permit uh, for a larger retaining wall, which I think initially their, their retain was closer to five, five and a half feet tall. Um, so there have been some adjustments, but from a practical standpoint, in order to prevent any further erosions, they do have to do something. And so this board has to, you know, make an action to enable them to do that.
I would be comfortable moving forward, subject to all of the conditions that were just discussed.
I agree.
They also need to set a bond amount for, um, that would be uh, to ensure the proper and faithful completion of the work. And typically, that's, um, the amount, uh, you know, the construction cost is about the amount of the bond. That's the, you know, the, the typical amount of the bond. So if the applicant's team can kind of give us an estimate, and then we can maybe base the bond on that amount.
Is that something that has to be provided now, or is that?
Yeah, that should be in the resolution.
Yeah, the, um, the cost of, for the, the material that took, um, everything is, came to about 5,000.
And labor?
Um, the labor, I'd be doing it myself, so that's the labor.
Are you a insured contractor or? Mr. McIntosh?
Um, no, I'm not, but I, I, I used to do it, um, but, you know, I, I don't do it anymore. And I put in all the paperwork for the liability, um, that the town needed and put the, um, on the liability and stuff like that.
Okay.
I, yeah, I mean, that's a building department issue. I, I don't, I'm not sure what I can say to that, though. We do need to establish a value and a cost for the bond.
Right. So, uh, that's, that's what you have to deal with.
Right.
So the cost of the bond, um, just correct me if I'm wrong here, Amanda. The cost of the bond is basically to ensure that the work gets done, so that in the event that the applicant does not do the work themselves, that we can pay somebody to do the work. So $5,000 may be the cost to the applicant, but it's not the cost of the actual project.
Yeah.
The, the bond shouldn't be for that low amount.
Sorry, Bobby, what'd you say?
How many linear, linear walls is being installed? Was it like eight, seven, something like that, was it?
A hundred and ten feet.
Hundred and ten feet.
Mm-hmm.
At a hundred dollars a foot?
I think that's, that's probably the lowest, Seth, to be honest.
Uh, yeah, Nina and Isabel, I would want to lean on y'all. Y'all are both contract estimators. Perhaps you can?
Probably push like a foot on, something like that.
I think it's very low.
It seemed light to me.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is probably $25,000 job, job in my small.
Yeah, I, I think it's almost an order of magnitude off, maybe not that much, but I don't, I certainly don't think it's 5,000, 1,000.
So. Can we come to consensus on what we think a number would be on it? Like, if 20,000, is it, like, what are we thinking? We should be able to do that.
20,000 is two, you know, roughly $200 a foot. Um, just trying to, try to put some sort of a unit on it. I agree with you. That makes sense. But.
Because the material cost was 5,000, um, yeah, see it being less than 200 of, I mean, we're, we're for a small wall and it came in at 300 a foot, foot. Much smaller, so I, I think it may be economies of scale and maybe get a discount if it's this big, right? I think 200 foot seems appropriate. It's conceivable that it can, can be done for that.
Yeah, the wall itself isn't difficult. It's the access that's going to drive the labor up.
It's, it's hand-carried.
Right.
It's, there's, you know, there's no backhoe, there's, I mean.
A crew of four guys, you know, over the course of two weeks, three weeks?
I mean, dude, 250 a day per guy, right? 250, three, four, times, fourteen working days is $14,000 in work and labor and 5,000 for the materials, but you had 20,000, 1,000, so about 200 a foot.
We, we got there in two different ways. To me, that, that, that does make sense.
Okay. So you're saying it's $20,000 bond?
I think that makes sense. I, you know, that's a, it'd be nice for the construction folks on the board. I'd have to put anybody on the spot, but no, I, I do a lot of this work too, so. But yeah, I think, I think it makes sense. I think that's fair. I think it's, it's reasonable.
Seth, I just wanted to chime in. I think 20,000 is, it's fair for the retaining wall, but we also have to consider some other stuff. We have to stabilize the construction, um, airway going down, and then there's the silk fence. So we also have to add a little bit of money. So I would say probably about 25,000 should cover everything. Little bit of protection as well.
Yeah, I'm, that's what I said. I'm, I'm in agreement with 20,000.
That, yeah. So, so should we, I mean, I mean, that $25,000 number is, is protective. This is a bond. This is not, you know, this is, this is a way of protecting the building, of, of protecting the village in the event this doesn't go through. Um, so I think the number that we're looking at right now is a $25,000 bond, right? That's, that's kind of what I'm hearing. Um, I think for the sake of, that number makes sense. We've arrived at it through, you know, I think a thoughtful process. I think maybe, I would, I would be in favor of moving forward with, with that bond. Um, with it, with the conditional approval, it's not a full, you know, we need, it needs to be the conditions of the Keller Session, um, view. Um, and then we would attach to it the bond, the, the value of $25,000 worth of work.
Okay.
Um, so winding up there, do we, if we have a consensus, is there, is there a, a motion for?
Eric Talbot, I make the motion, uh, to, uh, provide a conditional approval of the cut and fill permit. Uh, so long as the applicant meets the, uh, details outlined in the Keller Sessions.
A second?
Michael Aronson, second. Do we?
Uh, was there a question there?
I just, do we need to specifically state the amount of the bond in our approval?
I, I have it down. You.
Okay.
You have $25,000 for the bond.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, all right. So who was the, who was the second there? I'm sorry.
I, Michael, I was.
All right, thank you. Uh, the roll call is Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Baucher.
Hi.
David Chow.
Hi.
Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
Okay.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Um, thank you very much, uh, both for your presentation, um, and, uh, all right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Have a good one. Bye-bye.
Okay, um, all right, let's keep going here. Um, we're up to item C. Uh, this is 14 Water Street, uh, planning board 06, 2021, and BAR 05, 2021. Um, so we've seen this the last couple of meetings. This is the, um, we're, we're looking at a couple of different, uh, items here. So there's, uh, conditional use site plan, BAR, uh, and a parking waiver. Um, so those are the items, uh, in question for this particular, uh, uh, item. And I guess, this is the planning board, uh, declared lead, lead agency at our, at our last meeting. This had previously been a, a zoning board, um, project, and it switched over after the project was substantially altered. So if we can bring in that team, it looks like everybody's here. Who's?
Well, we have Eric Churchill and Joseph Brennan. Is Jennifer Glansberg part of your team as well?
Yes, she is. Or I'm sorry, Jennifer Church.
Right.
For Church. Okay.
It's Bobby back. I want to do a quick interjection. Hey, everyone, now, now, I'm going to recuse myself of all from the, I was involved in a transaction. I'm just going to go on, unmute my camera off.
All right, thanks, Bobby.
And Ron, uh, Jamie should be.
Ron, okay. Um, also, just a note, Isabel, you are now, uh, permitted to vote.
Great, thank you.
Uh, that's provided that she's up to speed on, on the application.
Okay. Um.
You said Ron?
Yeah, Ron Steinverzold should be on.
I see a Ryan Farnham with their hand.
Yes, Ryan, Ryan is, is on, and Skip Francis should also be on.
Okay. All right. Ryan, Skip. I do not see Ron Steinverzold.
Now, just go back a second. So, so as far as Amanda's comment regarding Isabel, so, you know, Isabel, if you've, if you've looked back at the record on this, and feel, you know, and feel comfortable that you've, that you're familiar with, with the project, um, if anything does come up to vote tonight, then, you know, it, it's only under those conditions, so just to be clear.
Okay, understood, Seth.
Thanks. Um, all right, so, or is, are we, we done bringing people in?
Uh, yeah, we don't have, uh, Ron Steinverzold. He's not here listed on the, um, list, so if you want to contact him and let him know, um.
This is Jennifer Church. I'm an attorney at Steinverzold Levy, which is Ron's firm, and I'm happy to proceed. I think he is trying to get on, but if, if it's not going to work, then I think we can still proceed. Um, and I can just give a, a very brief introduction. I know that this application has been before the board several times, so I'll be very brief. I know you're already familiar with the project. And, you know, this applicant has worked very hard to address all of the comments, um, you know, over the course of the many months. And we've submitted, you know, the letter and revised site plan this afternoon, and we believe that we have satisfactorily addressed, you know, everything that has been raised by the board. Um, so I, I'm just going to throw it over to the professionals to, um, get down to and, uh, discuss, uh, the few minor comments that we need to address tonight.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, and, uh, thank you, board. It's good to be back in front of you after that lovely August break. Um, and here we, here we are, and, um, if you remember, we started this project, which, with a much bigger, um, application. We have scaled it down, um, dramatically. We have met with you guys a couple of times about the scaled-down version. Uh, we presented to the EAC, uh, regarding the scaled-down version. We have received Keller Sessions, uh, two rounds of comments on the scaled-down version. And so, um, what we're going to go over today is just the review of those comments. We received the last set of comments on Fri, uh, this past Friday. Um, and we have responded to them, uh, in this meeting. We haven't sent those along to you guys, uh, just to correct Jennifer there for a second. Uh, we just finished those corrections this afternoon. Um, but the, you know, we're trying to respond as quickly as, as possible to, to these pieces. So, um, I'm going to present the screen here, um, and, um, go through, and I'm going to ask that our, uh, consulting engineer, civil engineer, uh, Skip Francis and Ryan, um, chime in on these, uh, these points here. So, this is the, the latest hit list of, of Creighton Manning, uh, I'm sorry, the response of Creighton Manning. We'll send you this letter. But this is that the first comment was satisfied. The, uh, additional, the next comment was regarding, uh, adjacent hedgerows and the 24-inch tree. Uh, we are, I'm sorry, uh, wrong. Uh, sorry. So on the application, there is a question about this hedgerow on the south side that is not going to interfere with our construction, uh, process. It is on the owner's property. We don't see any issue with that. Um, and so we are going to, we view that as a non, uh, i- issue. The 24-inch tree in the back, uh, there is a comment that we resolve whether we had permission from our neighbor uh, in order to take down this tree. Uh, we have not been able to, uh, the, our neighbor to the east has been unresponsive to multiple requests. We are prepared to jog the, this is an outdoor patio. Uh, it's not part of our built envelope. We are prepared to jog the patio to. We are prepared to jog the patio to hopefully allow that tree to remain. And this also helps address one of the comments in the E A C piece, which is to try and keep as many trees in this district as possible. And so we, we think that that's a, a good trade off there. So to keep going through the Keller Sessions comments, I'm going to let Skip talk about the D P W piece, but Skip, do you want to talk about these next two items together here?
Eric, maybe, and Seth, if it's okay, I just had a quick question before we leave the, the item with the tree, unless you're back to it. What, by, by creating that jog, what kind of separation do you hope to gain between the, the tree and the, and the building itself? But, you know, the twenty four inch tree has probably got a sizable root structure to it. Just want to make sure that, you know, by excavating the foundation for the building, we're not damaging all that and the tree end up coming down anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the entirety of this tree is in our property. And other than the bulb of the, other than when it comes out of the ground, it immediately juts into our property. And we are, we, we would like to work with the owner to, to resolve this as, as best we can, that offset. Again, this comment came on Friday. That offset probably needs to be, you know, a good six, seven feet off of that. We, you know, if we lose that corner of the patio, we're okay with that. I think we need to talk to somebody about exactly what that dimension is. But this is also a, a point of excavation where we are not going down very deep. The, if you remember, the excavation steps here in the back. So we think that we have a good chance of preserving this tree with a, with a good offset here.
I, I'm also just going to chime in real quick. You, you know that, that's not, that's the patio and not the building envelope. So where, where is your actual foundation relative to that tree?
It is ten feet away. Or more, yeah, it's more than ten feet away because we're, our envelope is ten feet off of the property line and that tree is two inches, ten feet, two inches. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, you guys can keep going through your notes. Those are good questions. Thanks, Joe.
This is Skip at Creighton Manning, and I will defer to Ryan, who prepared the final responses to these, and I can let Ryan chime in. I'm here to support as well, too. So Ryan, why don't you take those responses? Yeah, so comment four was about the connection of the water main to the municipal and the service laterals. We have proposed a six inch lateral to the building. And this comment question, I just wanted us to confirm with the village water department whether they would like a separate tap to the water main with, for fire demand and domestic service. So we reached out to the village D P W, but as the comment notes that we can finalize this detail during the, the village building permit and the water service permit process. We're amenable to both. It just depends on what the water department is looking for on that. For comment seven about the sewer demand, Westchester County Health Department's threshold for review is over twenty five hundred gallons per day. This comment refers to the unspecified uses in the commercial studios. And while we don't know the exact use in each of those garages, garage studios, they will not have an individual water and sewer connection. And so we don't feel like all the uses that are available to them in the village code would be applicable to these units. And so we still don't feel that we would meet the threshold to submit to the Westchester County Department of Health. Because we wouldn't be exceeding any, any of the design loads of, of great, so.
And to continue that a little bit further before we take some questions on that, on our uses, we are, we did hear comments last time about some concern of uses. And there is some ambiguity here of uses in, in this space. So I want to clarify that. So this is the use table of appendix A. S P N is our district animal related uses. We will, are willing to admit that. And I think that was actually the specific one that may have referenced the water usage. So we are willing to admit that item, that use. Another question that came up last in July was noise. Educational uses in, is not permitted in S P N district. This is where music rooms are governed in the, in the village code. We're not challenging that. We're not asking for that. So we don't foresee that as a, a use. Water-related recreational facilities, we are also willing to admit for both the convenient, you know, that doesn't seem like an appropriate use here. And finally, artisan workspaces comma intensive. This is where the, this is not permitted in this district. This is where permanent uses included woodworking, metalworking, blast making, fiber bait, so et cetera, craft brewery and distillery. We're not asking for this. Notably, there was recently a new distillery that went in across the street that must have received a, a zoning variance to be put in. We're not asking for that. We're going to respect the approved uses that, that are here. And so jumping back to, so again, we're willing to admit water-related recreational facilities, and we're willing to omit animal-related uses.
I, I, I think that I remember looking at, and maybe, Joe, you can let me know. Cause I, I know one of the water-related or, you know, sewer, sewer connected issues was, was also restaurant. I could be wrong about that. But I want to make sure that we're not, you know, it's not usable right now. I also know, you noted that there's not an existing, you know, water sewer hookup in a lot of these maker spaces. I mean, but obviously, you know, alterations can be made in the future. And if it's, you know, if there are permitted uses, we want to make sure that we're kind of fully protected here. So is, is that, is restaurant a in a, a possible future use? And would that trigger the, the county review of, of the, of the sewer output?
I, I would assume that the, if, if it's not intended to be a restaurant with a, if it was ever in the future converted to a restaurant, you would need more bathrooms and subject to a, a, a use permit. So, or an occupancy change. So I don't know how you would get through the planning process without coming back in front of you to say that we want to put a restaurant in this space.
Well, that's a little tricky because it is a permitted use in the zone. You know, as of right use. But there would probably be dimensional and parking issues that would need to be addressed somehow. I'm not sure how we would do that.
Yeah, the, you would, you don't have any bargain on site, so you would need to come back for an additional waiver to the planning board at, at that time anyways. And I'm just trying to think this through. You don't have necessarily ADA accessible restrooms on site to provide it. And there's probably some other aspects of this as well.
I, I think we're.
I'm sorry, tho- those types of aspects, I mean, would all be handled, I think administratively through a building permit application, right? Construction of an ADA bathroom or?
Those, those probably would be, but the parking would definitely not.
But I think the parking would be the only real, I guess, hook to come back to the planning board.
I, I guess my question is, I mean, and, and I, I appreciate your going through these uses and, and offering to restrict some of them as part of this process. I just wondering why, why this one use would, would be left on if, you know, by all accounts, all of these other constraints would make it, you know, pretty impractical and very unlikely. But, you know, we're the board that's reviewing this right now, you know, and, and if this could kind of, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen in the future. And if we can have that restriction built into this, this process, I think that would, that would protect us. I think it's also, you know, as, as you guys noted, protective of, of some of the, the concerns that were voiced in the public hearing the last time we all met.
Look, if, if, if that's the hang up, we're, we're willing to, to move past that and, and put that use restriction on it. I, I will note that there is a funeral parlor next door that is not permitted use. There's a distillery across the street that is not permitted use. And there's a restaurant on the corner that is not a permitted use. So we, we certainly respect the fact that if this is, if that's an issue with the sewer and, 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 and helps move this along, I, I don't think that that is, is a problem to, to put that restriction on.
So just to be clear for the record, you're willing to forego the permitted uses in the S P N of water recreation facilities, restaurant spaces, and animal-related uses?
Correct. There's, oh, right, the other, right. The other uses were not permitted. That's, I got you.
Okay.
And we would, we did discuss some of this internally prior to the meeting. That's going to be entered into the resolution and into the negative declaration that you're not going to have an excessive impact on the sewer system because you are omitting these items. And so it's important to note that that will carry forward after this project. So if any future board comes and looks and sees if there's any restrictions, it'll be written into the resolution and the negative declaration. So if you tried to move forward with something in the future, you would have to reopen both of those.
Thanks, Henry. I know we, we kind of stopped you in the middle of, of going through that particular review. Do you guys have other, other comments that you wanted to kind of?
There's one last comment here on comment number eight, which I will defer to Ryan again to do that.
So comment number eight pertains to stormwater and how it relates to village code, state code in terms of stormwater management. The project itself is not large enough to trigger state stormwater regulations. However, it is large enough to trigger village code requirements through the discussions with, in coordination with the village D P W. And so through that process of coordination with the village D P W, we are proposing a new catch basin on Water Street and a hundred and sixty five linear feet of new storm pipe that will connect into the village's municipal system. On site, there is about three feet between the edge of building and the property line on each side. And so to capture runoff through that, we're proposing a drip edge with infiltration. So there is kind of like a stone top and then a a finer stone below that that connects to an under drain pipe. And that under drain pipe goes all the way around the building. As it goes down the hill, the, the under drain connects into that, that new catch basin that's being installed in front of the property. So the idea is that instead of having, if any runoff or rain falls between the property line and the building, instead of just rushing down the hill, it infiltrates into the ground, into this under drain system and goes into the storm, so storm waters municipal system.
And we were asked to revise this detail with the depth of the wash type two stone. And that's been shown here. We were asked to add a ninety foot, two forty fives instead of a ninety on, in the plan document. Let me find the right page. And we have updated both of those elements.
And, and this, this is a, a new response set. I don't know if this, this has not yet been reviewed. Is that correct?
No, it, it has not. These were the comments that came on Friday, and we have, we're, we will send these over. But I, I think these were of, of small enough consequence to, to these that we hope that we could talk through this in this meeting.
All right. Do you guys have anything else that you wanted to, to present to us before we kind of move forward with our conversation or?
Sure. Very quickly, there was comments in the last meeting about where the, how the the internal gutter system, Mr. Roy, I believe that you actually had a question about that. We have highlighted on the axons here where vents are and shown them in the renderings. They're very hard to see because they are hard to see. They're all in the standing seam metal part of this building. And we, they would be color matched to the siding material. The actual detail of, let me find the right screen here. I'm sorry, I wanted to have everything ready for you guys. Now I can't find anything. Is, these are the updated elevations. These were submitted previously with where those elements are. And here is our internal gutter detail as well. And so I, I believe that those were the comments that had come out of the, the last meeting. And I hope, happy to take any questions. And if there's anything that I missed, hopefully we picked it up.
I'll kind of put my hand out to the board. Any, you know, kind of comments or questions that you guys have at this point?
Just to go back to the tree. I'm wondering if we can put a condition in that they need to, the applicant needs to have an arborist come on site and to prepare a tree protection plan because I'm also worried about that root system. And the thing with trees is that each piece of that root system corresponds to a piece of the canopy. So if you take off a chunk of, a good chunk of a root system, you will have corresponding dieback in the canopy. So just, you know, wanting to make sure that that is feasible, that that tree is going to be okay.
That's, I mean, that's a permissible condition, I think. But before we start talking about conditions of approval, I just want to remind the board that you've, you've declared yourself lead agency for secret purposes. You still have to make a finding environmental. Why can't I think of the right word? You need to determine, make an environmental determination. That's what I'm trying to say. So before you make any sort of approvals or decide anything on the waiver or anything else, we'll be doing the secret process. So I would consider everything in the context of, does it have significant adverse environmental impacts at the moment?
So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I just, one question on that. Is there any requirement for D E C involvement in this? I just had seen something.
They don't hit any thresholds that would.
No, okay. I just had seen something about a turtle, I think it was. It made me wonder. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to add to Amanda's comment earlier that, you know, obviously there are some unique circumstances regarding this project. So if the board does feel like they are close to, to a decision, I'm, we're recommending that you direct staff to prepare the neck deck language and prepare the approval language so that we can have that written up and provided to the board for the next meeting. So we're asking that you don't take a vote today necessarily on it. But if you are more or less ready to take that vote, just get us to prepare it so that you have it in advance and, 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 and we can look at it. uh, we can look at it obviously because we'll prepare it, but the attorney for their side can look at it as well and, uh, can be clear what the expectations are.
Thanks Jaime. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that makes sense. I think we've, we've listened to this project. There's been a lot of kind of work on and back and forth. Um, like we're, we're getting, getting close to a, a good place and it's been pretty responsive to some of the comments that we've had. I would know that.
One little amendment to that. I, I, I would say that you can, uh, if you do direct us to do that, I, you can close the public hearing. Um, it may not be. I'm not sure whether you want to keep the public hearing open or not. And I defer to my colleagues here to, to provide their advice on that. But if you, if you are sort of close to decision, you direct us to prepare stuff. It may make sense to close the public hearing at this point so that you can.
I wouldn't close the public hearing just yet. I would until we have a draft of the negative declaration ready for the board to review and available for the public to comment on.
Thanks. And that, that's, I, I feel very strongly that way as well. So, um, so, you know, if, if we're gonna, you know, we, we do have, I don't know if we have folks, I do see hands raised, um, in the chat session. I, I think that we, we've listened to this. I, we've had a couple of comments from the board. I do think it makes sense to, you know, to move forward with the process, but you know, we can just hear what folks, if there's anybody here from the public to speak to this, we'd have to reopen the, the hearing. Or I used, you know, to, to go, go back into public hearing right now, which was in Jordan last time. So do we, do we have a motion, uh, to do that?
Michael Aronson, motion to reopen the public hearing.
Nina Aaron, second.
Objections? There are no objections. The motion passes by unanimous consent. So, um, I, I'd like to right now invite anybody from the public who may be in this meeting, uh, to speak.
We have a James Bennett here.
Okay.
And, um, Mr. Bennett is. Uh, Mr. Bennett, you're, you're on our side. If you could unmute yourself.
Mr. Bennett? You're, you're still on mute.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
We got you now. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And just a reminder, if you could just introduce yourself and your, your place of residence.
I am James Bennett. I live at twelve Water Street, the property adjoining the, uh, your proposed building. Um, I have not heard anybody mention parking at all in this place. You, you really don't have any parking in this area. He's talking about, he's talking about the heaven, um, commercial property on a bus route. There's definitely no parking down here. And I, I just wondered, how many of you from the, uh, board have come down and taken a peek at this property and the situation around it?
Okay, I can't speak to my former board members, but I know that I, I, I've certainly visited and, and been in that neighborhood and, and site to look at it specifically with regard to this project during a couple of different times of death.
You see the small footprint he has to work with?
Yes, I, I am, I am familiar with the site. I, I.
Are you familiar with the, uh, the street itself, Water Street?
I am. I, I, I'm curious to hear your, you know, we're, we're here to listen to your comments.
Okay. Well, my first, my comment is that we absolutely have no parking down here. And for somebody else to open up a commercial and residential um, building with no parking, with who knows how many more cars, you're talking about four individual departments, apartments with cars in each one? Have you guys, has anybody addressed the parking at all?
The parking issue is one of the issues that's, that's before us to, to look at. It's not something we've acted on or made any decisions on right now.
All right.
Yeah, my, my neighbor's there and he, we're both, it will both speak also.
Okay.
Yeah.
He doesn't need to identify himself for the record.
Yes, yes. Colance Mosley and an owner of sixteen Water Street. And, you know, I, I've specified at the other meetings too. I might, you know, I have a very large concern about this property because, you know, uh, uh, by being, you know, the, the size of it, you know, I think that is definitely too, too much, too large for it to be, you know, be put on there. They're three feet away from my, you know, I have, I have structures. I have my driveway that's right on the property line. And when you start digging and putting something to that magnitude there, you just ca- I can't believe that it's not gonna be, uh, you know, it's, it's not gonna compromise the art surrounding property some kind of way. And, um, also, if you know, it's, it's just the thing that, uh, you know, uh, this, i- it seemed like this thing was being pushed from the beginning. I got, you know, it, I think it should be further investigated. We've been investigating this property. And I know that the, the people that did, uh, this, the dirt samples and all that, the company that came in, they, when they pull out samples, which building works, what nobody showed up there when they do it because I let them use my driveway twice to get on the property to take, to take these samples. And that because of the inconsistencies that were shown to us there, the, the, one of the workers from the property told us that nothing too large should be built on this property. But yet and still, you have, you know, you, you, you have, uh, you know, constantly pushing, pushing, pushing. It seemed like something's missing here, you know? I, I know, I, I, I was born and raised down here. I know that, that the area is landfill. It's not all bedrock, you know, like it says on the thing. And, and also, you know, it's just like the, 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 the trees, like example there, you also, we also have large limbs hanging over our properties also. So if anything's compromised, that's done there. And, um, I'm just, I'm concerned about the danger that might be just building it while it's building, the inconvenience it's gonna be. Uh, there's like this, you know, the cleanup. There's, there's flags and flags, you know, on the property with debris that's buried. Does, I also know that there's an oil tank in the ground on the property. So all this stuff has to be cleaned out. Uh, you know, are you putting us, you know, our, our, our families, our neighborhood in danger by doing this? I mean, it's a lot, it's a, a lot of things that are still concerning, a lot of things that disturbing. It's, he wants to be exempt from all this parking and stuff. We have, you know, we have eleven legal spaces on this block of Water Street. And is probably gonna need just as much or more just for the, the parcel that he wants to do on this little set of properties. I mean, I have, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a little upset about this, man, but I have so much on my mind, but this, I'll leave it at this for right now because, you know, I don't want to take up, you, you know, it's been a long night already, but there's just a lot of concerns and a lot of things that I just think haven't been touched on. And that, you know, you should know about before this is even allowed to be done, you know? I, it's so, that I thank you for your time and that's, that's all I'm gonna say for right now. But, you know, I have I got a lot more on my mind also. So, but anyway, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mosley, and then thank you, Mr. Bennett. Um, and, and before we have anybody else speak or if there is anybody else here, I just wanted to just remind, you know, both of you and, and the public that this is a project that's, um, you know, been under review for some time and it's the project that we're looking at right now is quite different from the project that was originally presented to us. Um, and a lot of that is because of concerns of folks like you, um, even some of the items that came up during tonight's uh, conversation were directly related to some of both of your comments, um, when, when we met last time, just in terms of, of, of how uh, the different uses of this project could impact your, your neighborhood and, and your homes. So, um, thank you again for, for, for coming um, and speaking. Do we have anybody else, uh, from the public that, that's here, uh, to speak to this project?
No.
I don't see any other hands. Um, no, no emails or, or any other, uh, communication Jaime that you've received.
Let me check. No.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Uh, can I, can I ask a question real quick of, uh, Amanda and Jaime, uh, just regarding, uh, the parking situation, uh, that Mr. Mosley and, uh, Mr. Bennett, uh, raised. And, uh, I, I, I believe they were at the previous public hearing where we were um, in person and they appeared there and also had some comments for the board. Um, my question is really, it's, it's a kind of a bigger question, which is what is the role of the planning board in terms of communicating with the Board of Trustees regarding analyzing parking and creating uh, trying to increase this, the on-street parking supply, uh, for the, uh, Station Plaza North District area. Uh, that seems to be a concern. I know there, we, we, of course, we had another project before this board, uh, on Water Street, uh, which was also regarding parking. So that it's just more of like a, like a big, like a overall question, like how are, what, what is the role of the planning board in, in terms of, uh, advising, uh, the Board of Trustees, uh, concerns that are raised by the public and that also to, uh, that we're directly, you having a, a, playing a role in, but as, serving as the, uh, the land board that is approving parking waivers.
Right. Uh, currently, Eric, the code does allow for parking waivers in the SPN, the VC and the NC two districts provided certain conditions are met. As the planning board, you know, you are on the front lines, uh, you know, seeing these applications come in. And, uh, you're kind of, like I said, you're on the front lines, you're seeing the conditions upon which applications are coming in, when you're granting them, when you're not granting them. It's appropriate if you, if you feel that a code change is warranted to write to the Board of Trustees a memo saying, you know, here's what we've observed. We feel that potential changes might be necessary and just to bring it to their attention and to get the conversation started. Um, it's up to the Board of Trustees ultimately to, um, enact any code changes. But it is, it is appropriate for the planning board to discuss at a later date, not right now, whether they'd like to bring the issue to the Board of Trustees' attention if there is an issue and if there are potential changes that you'd like to make to the code for the Board of Trustees to look into.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Eric. Um, I just, cause we are still in, in the public hearing. I, I would, um, I think it makes sense to adjourn. So we have that motion to adjourn the public hearing that we can.
Michael Aronson, motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Eric Talbot, second motion.
Any objections? There are no objections. The motion passes by unanimous consent. So the public hearing is adjourned. Um, so, and, and, and just to follow up on, on what Eric was saying, I, I, I do think that that's, you know, I obviously a, a, a big item here. And Eric also noted that we, there was a parking waiver in the, you know, uh, across the street from this that was granted, uh, by this board in, I think, uh, June or July. Um, so I, I think that is something that we need to think about carefully and both in terms of the immediacy of this project, but also I think more is, uh, it, as, as Eric noted, in, in terms of a long-term kind of conceptual idea. Is, is, is that a hand run?
It, it is. Thank you. If I may just have a moment, I, I do want to highlight, um, that in addition to other waivers that have been out there, I have noticed, um, being an Austin resident myself, that popping up around the village over the summer were a number of restaurants cordoning off parking spaces, um, at least two of which are within our radius of examination for parking to this property. And I'm not familiar with any provision in the village code that allows the village to effectively lease those spaces out for profit.
Yeah, there, there was, so there was a law that was passed at the beginning of the process when that happened, that was done through executive order. There was a, um, a, a local law that was passed, I want to say three or six months ago that enabled the village to do that. So there, there is a law.
But is, is the, are those restaurants being forced to go through the same parking analysis that we're being forced to go through? Because those are on-street parking spots that are closed twenty-four, seven for the entire summer. Um, they're still closed off, even though the summer's over. And, uh, and those ru- those are spaces that get taken out of that inventory that everybody is so concerned about.
There, those are not parking waivers. Those are, um, special license agreements with the village that enable them to use that space uh, for outdoor dining because of the conditions of the pandemic. Um, they're unique in that circumstance. They may outlive the pandemic. Uh, we're not really sure what's gonna happen with those at this time, but no, those are different types of circumstances. So they're not encroaching on um, parking spaces that were available to them, um, in, in terms of at least spaces that they own. They were just parking spaces that were in the villages right of way. Uh, and the village made those license agreements. There's also limitations on the number of spaces that they can take. So they, they only pretty much allowed to take two spaces, uh, per restaurant and, um, it's, you know, for the most part, I think those are all in different districts. And none of them are in the Station Plaza North District.
There's one directly across the street from us.
Is there one at the Maracas? They, they do have one in the Maracas? Okay. All right. I apologize.
And, and that's, and I believe that's taking, uh, one or, uh, at least one, if not two parking spaces from this very immediate vicinity that we're talking about. So I, I, I feel, I, I, I feel as if, um, we, we've, we've, we've gone, I, I, I just, I guess I, I, I wanted to clarify the issue in light of the neighbor's comment, re-raising the parking issue, which I thought uh, we had fairly well resolved already.
Yeah, I, I, we, I mean, to, you know, for the record and to be fair, we've not resolved anything, right? We're, we're, we're still in the review process. And, and, um, and I, and I think maybe towards that end, I, you know, it, look, it's, it's an important issue. Uh, you know, Jaime and Amanda, we, you know, not specific to this project, but, but to that issue in general, if, if we are thinking about having a work session for um, you know, farm-based owning, maybe that's another item that we could put on that list and just have a, a discussion about, you know, just to kind of clarify any board questions that we have on, on the parking waiver process. Cause it's, it is coming up frequently and specifically in, in, in a couple of different districts. Um, so I think it's a conversation worth, worth having. Um, but I think more specifically, I think where, where we are tonight, I think before we went into public hearing, we were talking about, um, making, making a recommendation to the built, to the village staff um, to begin the drafting of a, you know, of a, you know, environmental, um, statement. And I think that that's, yeah, I do think that given, you know, put, taking a parking, parking wave is actually a separate issue. Um, we can move forward with all of this, um, and at least in, in that respect. And I, I, I feel like enough has been kind of said and done from my, from my end. And I know, um, Joe spent a lot of time on this project as well. And if, eh, eh, you know, just any comments from the board or, or agreement or disagreement, that that's probably a next step to, to look at, at the beginning, the beginning of drafting the, uh, eh, the environmental, um, negative, I guess, you know, eh, 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 declaration that we could then review and, and determine if we agree with.
Thank you.
So, no one on the board disagrees with that. Do we have a, a motion to move in that direction?
Um, Nina Aaron, motion to, uh, have the staff review the environmental impact and draft a statement accordingly.
Michael Aronson, second.
A roll call.
It's Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Baucher. Oh, sorry, he repuses himself. Uh, David Chow.
Hi.
Um, Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
And, um, I don't know if we determined before if Isabel felt that she was, um, able to vote on this, but I'll ask now.
Isabel, yeah, I, I, Isabel, you, you've heard the, you've heard the comments tonight and it, and it's, you know, you're, you're, if you feel comfortable that you're familiar enough, I would feel comfortable with that as well.
Yes, I, I'm comfortable with, uh, uh, the, the next step.
Okay.
So that registers an eye.
Hi.
Um, I, eh, the only question I have is would you like us to also prepar- uh, prepare a resolution um, for you to review, uh, in, considering the fact that resolution would also have to have conditional language within it? Or is that something you'd rather deal with later?
I think.
Go ahead.
I know, I mean, I, I think, you know, given what we, the conversation we just had, I think that eh, eh, the instruction is really just to, to draft the, you know, eh, you know, presume negative declaration, um, for us to review. And then, and then as far as the, you know, any final resolution that would come after, you know. as far as the, you know, any final resolution that would come after, you know, the, you know, after we review that, like with negative declaration.
Yep, that sounds right to me.
So if I may, are we suggesting that the soonest we would have our approval would be at a No- November meeting?
Uh, potentially.
Is there any way that we might expedite that and do everything at the next meeting?
No, they have to do secret first.
Uh, I, I understand, I, I feel as if we've, we've discussed these issues at great length over the year. And uh, I would, we, we were really hoping uh, to, to not stretch this out another two months.
Respectfully, Mr. Steinverzold, while we do appreciate your, your desire to move this along. Um, this project has not been around for a year. Uh, the, the project started, I think, in about May of last year and at the beginning, it was obviously an eight or nine unit building, it's, it's changed quite a bit, so. We do understand that you have urgency to get this done and I think that everybody's trying to work at a pace that's, you know, as fast as, as can be reasonably done, but um, this project as it stands right now in its current form has not been around for a year.
No, I totally understand that and I didn't say it has been around it for a year, I said that I hear, this year, that is. And um, I, I, you, that project, which was largely uh, built within the as-of-right constraints, was amended wildly uh, at the behest of the board and the neighbors. So we had, we had hoped that with that massive change to our project, uh, that, that it would move a little more expeditiously, that is all.
Okay. Um, well, at, at this point, we've, we've, you know, instructed building staff, we're, we're, you know, moving forward in the secret process. You know, moving towards resolving the secret process. Um, and then in that, you know, and then, then we'll move forward from there. Presumably at our next meeting, we'll be able to uh, to, to make some, some more, more movement, so. Um, I, with that, I think, I don't think we have any other actions to take on this tonight, so we'll close this item out for the, for the moment. Um, and move on, so thank you guys very much. Yeah, for your presentation uh, tonight and um, let's move forward in our agenda.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, all right, so next on the agenda is uh, 175 North Highland Avenue. Um, this is the site plan approval, this is a planning board item, site plan approval for uh, a gas station and convenience store. Welcome back, Bobby.
We have JB Hernandez here.
Okay.
Evening, and also have you, Sali. Um, you know, the property. Um, will I be able to share a screen?
Yes.
Yes, go for it.
You, all right, is that working or?
It is.
Okay, so, um, this property is, uh, I think everybody knows it as uh, Brandon uh, the existing Brandon Furniture Store. Uh, there used to be a gas station in two houses in the front of the property. Where we've been, um, this is a project that has been approved of different variations of the project, at least three times during the, in the past few years. It used to be uh, over four acres, now it's down to 3.95. It's in the intersection of Snowden Avenue and Highland Avenue. So this is the uh, existing property, this is the existing furniture store. Uh, this is where the old gas station used to be and this is where um, two houses uh, used to be that have been demolished. And there is also uh, what is called Lot Seven, there used to be a paper street that is owned by uh, one of Mr. Salis' companies as well. So what we intend to do now is uh, bring the same project that has been approved before, where it is concerned to the snack shop and the gas station. And um, we have opted now to maintain the furniture store in the rear as it is, maintain the retail. So in total, we have four different lots and uh, we will divide those two lots, it will be a lot, lot um, adjustment, lot line adjustment, will create two lots, one of 38,000 square feet and one of a 134,000 square feet. So this, we have several meetings with the staff and uh, we have um, come to terms with the um, that the existing project in the back, the Brandon Furniture Store uh, will uh, to remain as it is, since we are taking some of the uh, lot to give it to the front lot, will require a um, amended site plan. And in order to do that, we are demonstrating to the uh, we have enough parking spaces to support the existing uh, use. So we will um, in the front lot, we have a tree, you know, we have a canopy with six gas pumps. And then we have a 4,000 square foot snack shop with a drive-through. The drive-through has, it will come in and out through the same lap. Uh, in the past, we have at one point used the main entrance as an easement for egress, we're no longer doing that. And uh, in the rear, you know, we have calculated that we will need uh, 67 parking spaces to maintain the same use. And we have provided drawings that demonstrate that we have 70, 71 parking spaces. Uh, this diagram that we have provided to the board and we have worked with the staff on it. It shows the current use of the building and how it's shifted the use in itself. Where it used to be uh, this main portion, or the first floor was all um, showroom. Since the um, this, the furniture sales as, is more driven now by internet sales, the need for a showroom has become um, lesser uh, need. So we have reduced the showroom to about 80, 8,500 square feet, where it used to be about 15,000 square feet. In that, uh, we did incorporate that into the calculation that we use for um, the parking area. And again, we have 16 parking spaces in the front and 70, is like 71 in the rear. Uh, that, that is more than sufficient for the use we are proposing. At one point, we have requested to relocate the bus stop in the front. Now that we maintain in the entrance uh, for the furniture to as it is, the relocation of the uh, bus stop is no longer required. Uh, we showed some, you know, the landscaping that we have proposed for the lot in the front and uh, also we show how we started to do with um, the drainage system and we are providing a full SWIP for the property that will be for the uh, next meeting. There is also, we have received comments from Kelland Sessions this past Friday and we are uh, looking to uh, respond to those comments for the next meeting. This is the proposed snack shop, there is a lower level to it. Then there is a um, a coffee shop with a drive-through to the one side and then the uh, convenience store to the other side. Um, the proposed architecture for this building has not changed from the original. When we, actually, two times where we've been in front of this board, previous boards, much of the intent was to kind of bring some of the detail from the building next door. So we have uh, we created these roof brackets that kind of goes along the design that you see on the motorcycle uh, shop. So we have a combination of brick and a stack on this building and uh, architectural roof and the one uh, change that has been on the canopy. We used to have a canopy that went along the lines of the uh, property of the building. But now we have a new vendor for the gas, which will be mobile. And there uh, have a specific request about how the canopy uh, should look like. And that has led us to uh, this change in the canopy. And we also have proposed from the past, a um, sign along the street with the, for the gas. And we will have maintained the assistant sign for Brandon Furniture uh, in the main building. Part of uh, you know, as we go along with this, we were looking forward uh, to receiving from the board. Um, tonight was to uh, declare um, lead agency and have input and a on the site plan, so we can come back and move this project down for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Make sure I'm not on mute, I'm not, okay, um. Thanks, JB. Uh, so, and and actually, that was my first question. As I know, the last time this was ready to send it, I wasn't here personally, but so has there been a lead agency declaration? Uh, Jaime, on this, I guess not.
Actually, we did declare lead agency back in June for both 173 and 175 when both of those projects were on the agenda. So I think we did that at that point in an abundance of caution, not knowing what the applicant planned to do. Um, and I'm actually not entirely sure, based on the regulations, if now that they've pulled one of the applications off, if we need to re-declare lead agency, but.
I, I, I think that while the avenue did pull off one of the applications because they don't intend on making a, a drastic change to the use. Uh, they are proposing to change that somewhat by modifying the amount of space dedicated to retail space. And they're going to modify the property lot line uh, through the lot line adjustments. I think that that um, that original one should stand. Because they, they still need to get improvements and changes to that property. So I think both 173 and 175 uh, should remain on uh, as projects.
That's fine with me. I mean, that's why we did it that way.
The, just to clarify, they remain a separate project, so um, we can.
They're on the agenda together, they'll remain on the agenda together.
Okay, so lead agency, even though it was declared for two separate projects, it's okay, though it will come back to be an issue later on.
Hold on, I'm just gonna make sure, I'm gonna look at the, my notes for June or if, if Jamie can get there before me, then I'll just make sure.
So would they be two separate applications we just happen to review together for site plan? The subdivision obviously involves both lots.
I, 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 I don't, unless we're obligated to, you know, seeker to consider them two separate applications, I don't see why we would need to. The lot mergers are, are, you know, basically swapping land and trading them amongst each other, so I, I don't think it's.
Originally, we did have them listed as two separate applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, the motion what, that you originally took in June was to declare intent to be lead agency for both lots. So um, the only reason it's a secret event in the first place is because of the subdivision. That's, you know, still happening, that involves both lots. I think that the lead agency declaration can remain as is. Does that make sense, Joe and Jaime?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then I guess further to that, because I mean, it looks like today, you know, at least on today's agenda, the item is specifically 175, looking at the gas station and site plan, right? So it's not even, I guess, that's a question that I had, because we're also talking about the lot line adjustment.
Well, so Joe.
I'm sorry.
Joe Travelli prepared a pretty lengthy memo. I don't know that it makes sense to go through that full memo here. Uh, there are like 32 different comments. I, I think it probably makes more sense for the applicant to go back and address those comments. There are some pretty significant comments, including um, the completion of a SWIP, which is going to be required in order to send this over to the EAC. Um, the EAC doesn't have an application that's really ready to be reviewed and the EAC meeting is next week, so um, I think that there's a lot of comments that's only to be, you know, clarified before much can be done here.
Right, so.
We, I'm sorry, we, we understand that, but um, it goes back to um, there being, this is one project, right? And we have the uh, we're doing a site plan amendment to uh, the rear property. But we are taking, when we say 175, just to make sure we don't have to do too soon difference metal. We're saying 175 North Highland include the snack shop, the gas station. And because we're doing a lot line adjustment, it will include the site plan amendment for the rear, am I correct?
No, you're not just doing a lot line adjustment to the rear, you're also shrinking the size of the retail space so that you can lessen the amount of parking in there. You're also removing some concrete, there, there's a little more going on there than just a lot line adjustment in the back.
Right, so it's a site plan amendment, so do I, I just want a clarification, do I need a, a separate application or we do it all under one application?
I, I think, as far as I'm concerned right now, uh, one application is fine. I think that if we go back and have a discussion internally and it's determined that there is a second application needed, you have all of the components necessary to make that second application. But I, 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 I don't foresee a need for a secondary application at this time.
So, so then, to clarify, at this point in the June meeting, the board declared its intent to be lead agency for 173 and 175. Application has changed since then, it's been resubmitted, has been re-reviewed by Kellard Sessions recently, for which there is a lengthy memo with several bullet points which will impact our review and our ability to uh, refer this out to EAC, um, which would also be one of the subsequent steps from where we stand right now. Um, and so really, the next step is to get a response to the Kellard Sessions memo. Come back so we can understand any, you know, outstanding comments after that. And if we're satisfied, um, at that point, we could then refer this out to the EAC and 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 move that process forward. Is that an accurate accounting of where this stands?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Joe, do you agree?
Yes.
So I, I would say there is no action really to be taken on this right now. I'm sorry, someone's speaking?
No.
Um, no, so I, I guess, you know, we are, we are here, we're listening. Um, I, I think to have a, you know, I could see quickly if there's anybody from the public. Like, you know, we, did we open the public hearing at the last meeting, because I was not here?
Uh, let me, Jamie, do you know offhand or I can?
I don't think so, I don't think we did.
Um, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on anything tonight, is what it sounds like. Um, we're, we're waiting back for more information. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, given where we are, though, I think it might help for us just to, to, to open and see if there's anybody here who wants to speak to this and 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 just so we can kind of keep that, that moving, so that, that's, that's what I would like to do, I don't know, if you guys agree, you can have a motion for that.
Michael Aaronson, motion to open a public hearing.
Nina Aaron, second.
All right, any objections? There are no objections, so the motion passes by unanimous consent. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak to this tonight, uh, Jaime?
No.
Okay. Um, no emails, no?
No emails.
Okay, um, so can I have a motion to adjourn the public?
Before you adjourn it, let me ask you, we have a um, one other question we were discussing and you mentioned to in a higher uh, project. VAR has no expiration, so if the gas station, the snack shop uh, elevations were not to change, then we wouldn't need a, a reapproval?
They haven't changed at all, if they're exactly the same as the prior approval, then yes, they don't need to be.
Okay.
Is it, is there AR, ARB approval required for the um, canopy, which has changed?
Well, that's, that's what I, I need to discuss with the client to.
I'm gonna have to go back and take, take a look at that BAR, maybe JB, you can help me understand. Uh, the, the, the BAR originally, uh, I thought called for like an extra story. And you said it's not gonna happen, so.
That's, that's for the building in the back, I'm talking about the, the, the gas station, there's. That's, that's for the building in the back. I'm talking about the, the, the gas station, the snack shop. That has not changed.
Okay, this next, but to be clear, you do have an existing BAR approval for the property in the back. But you don't have a site plan approval for that, so you can't build according to that BAR approval. You can only keep what you have there now.
No, um, my question was related to the property in the front, to the BAR approval for the gas station.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to go back and verify that there's no changes, but as far as I know, there are no changes, correct?
Right, right, except the canopy, which will happen.
Can it be to the, to the, to the, to the gas pump, as you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's because, this is how I say, that's because mobile like to, they, they like to use a logo on their design. If it's possible, so that's what they give us their, their canopy and their logo on saying, you know, we like to have that one because it's going to be a mobile gas station. Before wasn't known, no brand gas station, so we designed it differently. Now we're just going with the logo and the canopy mobile gas station.
Is, is the, is the canopy changed in terms of size or is it just the coloration and the symbols on it? Question or a, or a BAR question?
Basically, the color, the color will be a young question.
I think we need to discuss with the building inspector.
So hopefully we'll have that information, but the next time this comes back before us. I, I think at this point, nobody hears from the public to speak. We can have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Michael Aaronson, motion to adjourn.
Any objections? No, no objections, so the, the motion passes by unanimous consent, the public hearing on this is closed, so I think.
No, you said adjourned.
It's adjourned, it's adjourned, it's adjourned, and that's what we moved it on.
You got what you said, sorry.
Is what I said, and it's ten o'clock at night and I've been going since six AM and I'm tired.
We only have like six, six left, I think.
I know, I know, this is great. And maybe I'll have dinner afterwards, we'll see. So, but yeah, so, so public hearing to correct is, is, is adjourned. And so at this point, we'll, we'll wait to get the response to the, to the various comments. And we'll, we'll come back and see if we can move this, push this forward. If it's appropriate next, next time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
We only have four left, so.
All right, I, I, I'm scrolling through this agenda.
The next one is a JB project as well.
I don't want to look to the end.
There's light at the end of the tunnel.
It always is. So we are up to seventy Croton Avenue, seventy A Croton Avenue. Which is a planning board in VR, planning board fourteen sixteen BAR nineteen nineteen. And right now we're looking for a revised site plan and BAR approvals are what are on the agenda at the moment, so.
We have JB Hernandez that's working on the project. We also have a William de Boer here. And I'm trying to get him in as an attendee.
Okay.
William, you're in. You could unmute yourself.
I'm here. Hello?
All right.
So you guys are here, so I guess JB, if you're gonna start us off going through the changes since last time.
Yes, and also here I have Robert Corky, which is the attorney for the project. Let me, I guess that issue. This is still sharing. Let me see if I can switch.
Sorry, getting late for my computer as well.
We can put it off to next week.
All right, so I think the war, I think the chairman was not present at the last meeting, but I think the war kind of had looked through this project. In one of the reasons we didn't move forward then, in an additional rendering or more detailed rendering of the rear patio was requested. And also there were an exterior tour party consultant review of the project, because this is an all concrete building now. Which was in, was just received at the time of the meeting. And there was the expectation that there were going to be substantial changes to the project. Fortunately, those dynamic realized. And I can walk you through what we have now as, as the building goes. So in the top is our current site plan assistance today. What is proposed in the hatch area indicates the cover patio. Now, at the bottom is what it was originally proposed. In a group in November of two thousand nineteen. Same goes here, this is for the landscaping. On the top is what is currently being proposed, on the bottom what was proposed in two thousand nineteen.
Sorry, can I just stop you for a quick second, just either one of these two drawings where we have the parking. And again, I wasn't part of the original approval of this project, so I, it's on the original proposed, where you show, you know, the parking is, is open air, but along you know, along the, I guess that's the, is that the north lot line there? Here, is that, is that a concrete wall? On, on both, on both sides of the parking there, I guess, is it fully?
Yes.
Okay, so and how tall, how tall was that wall? I'm just trying to get a gauge, kind of architecturally, how this looks differently.
It's about twelve, it was twelve between twelve and thirteen feet. And then we do have a section at the end said that, and I was requested that we provide a section, which we had in the original drawing, so we now incorporate into planning board drawings. And that kind of shows more in detail. So same goes for the elevations. This is what it was originally proposed, this is what is being proposed now. We should do in a more historical. There was some stone presented original due to, you know, construction costs and everything. We are doing more, keeping the same colors, but we're doing more historical base. Same goes for the side of the building. We did have openings, but we did have these grids that we were covering the openings with in the original design. So it was important for the board to, now we kept those, so we kept the opening behind the grill and.
Sorry, I, I was gonna stop you on that one photo, is that an error on the proposed current where you still show the stonework on the on the right side of the page?
Right here?
Up, up at the top, on the second and third.
No, this, this tackle will have the, we have the look.
So it'll be like a brick face, like a brick face taco?
Yes. So.
That wasn't, that wasn't rendered on the street facade, just, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, does you, you will see in that we have rendering, this is the hatch kind of over there, but is as you can tell. So this was the, the one change that came from having all these reviews was we did add it. This used to be a window in the rear, we added a another stairs for the top floor, which is, this is the first floor, second floor, top floor. And this is the rooftop patio for the parking area. And we did, you know, we did add this rendering. So the, the finishes in the rooftop patio over the parking area is going to be stamped concrete. And as we added the, the colors that we were, we're trying to do with the stamping concrete. Again, and this is the stairs that we adding to provide another form of figures from the top floor to level. This here, let me this here is the, the two renderings, and the bottom is what was originally approved. And the rendering on the top is what is being proposed now. And there you can see it does a little job set of showing the, this tackle, how it's going to be finished in the same on the side of the building. And this is the grill system that we incorporated into this side of the building. As was originally done. And, and this is a photo of the patio success now. And this is, you know, it was in preparation for retaining wall, not retain wall, a freestanding wall. That kind of goes against the fence that is in the adjacent property. And that is more to prevent any, anything from falling there. We also, we have been working with planning and building to establish the heights and establish the, the, the gray plane. We have reviewed that with, with Joe Augustinelli and we came to terms with gray plane being about four feet above the the front of Crown Avenue, so the, the current height proposed height for the building is thirty, thirty-five, six and a half inches. And that is within the compliant, the NC two district. Here is the section cutting through from front to back. So we have Crown Avenue, this is the first floor and the proposed garage. And this is the part that used to be a open area. So this used to be parking with an open area, which now has a patio on top of it. And you see this line here that we show is the line of the fence behind, in the property behind. So anything we're doing here is still under the chain link fence with slats on it, that is on the building next door. So again, this is the grade in the back, so this is all cut, that it was done. The original grade, prior construction came basically in a straight line to die. And it was due to be a two-foot wall along Crown Avenue. This is nothing more than demonstrating to the building department when we review this, how we achieve the gray plane, measuring twenty-two spots around the property. As, as the code describes, and we, we came up with the average of four point one for the gray plane. Now, there's been discussions with the building department about what we call will be considered front and rear yard set box, I mean, side and rear yard. So if we interpret this, there's a different interpretation of two, there'll be a cover parking area or part of the structure. But if we go with this as part of being a structure, now that it, because it has a roof on it, then it requires two variances, one for side yard and one for rear yard. And also, once we do that, it was.
It would require actually three variances to.
I was just getting to that, I was just getting, also the once you count the patio, I say as a covered area in part of the building, that will require also building coverage variances. So what we were trying to give from the board today is that, you know, review the we believe that the proposed finishes to the finishes we are doing now are similar and we're keeping intent. I know that if Michael was part of the board when we did this. The windows, you know, the window locations and these balconies and the street facade was important and also these the grill along the side, which is now the, the oil change place, it was also important. So is the changes to the finishes? And also, we will need an amended site plan for the patio. And of course, we, we understand that we have to go to to the zoning board of appeals to give us three variances. Now, we believe that having a patio over this, where it was an open parking area. Not only is beneficial for the tenants of the building, also it is aesthetically and for the neighbors, much better logged in to see a void in the rear yard that will be overlooked in the parking lot below. And which also necessitate to have fences and railing to prevent anyone from falling or any car from going over.
Before we talk about the back of the building, I just have one ARB question that I don't, I don't know if you addressed it before and I just didn't hear. But one of the big differences, other than the material, between your current proposal and your last proposal is the the sopiter, the cornice around the perimeter, the top of the building where it used to be kind of articulated with the building and now it's just a straight run? Yeah.
This facade?
Yeah, so if you look, if you look at the, you know, your, your cornice element is proposed to be straight across. Whereas previously it had some, you know, it followed the contour of.
Yes. Yes.
Why did you make that change?
The idea was to, that was my field change, the idea was to, we're trying to have some lighting, have a continuous roof line there. I don't think that there's you know, to bring that back, that element back, I don't think to be an element that, you know, we can do, you know, something that we can definitely do.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, yeah, that's I think it looked, I think it looked, you know, better, at least before. I mean, as far as, you know, the, the other issues on here, you know, the kind of interpretation of this. I guess this is maybe, you know, you know, Jaime, has there been a formal kind of request for a zoning variance here and an interpretation that this is part of the building now, it's no longer an open parking, parking area?
Yeah, so the building inspector did make that determination that it is a building based off of the way that the code is written. We've received some documents, but we have not had the amount of time necessary to actually prepare for a letter. There's no referral letter ready to give over to the, to the applicant at this time.
Okay, so that's, that's not a referral that we can act on right now.
I, however, I would note a couple of caveats with that. So the, if you were to refer today to the zoning board, it wouldn't be able to get to the zoning board until November. The, the, the opportunity to make it to the October meeting has passed. However, the referral letter, my expectation is that the referral letter will probably be available next week, as long as we are clear on everything, we've had enough time. There will still be the ability to go to the zoning board in November without an actual direct referral, I believe, upon speaking to a court counsel earlier today. They'd still be able to go at the same time, so even though there's no referral letter today. And even if you don't refer them directly to the zoning board today, because there's no referral letter ready. It won't affect the time that they would be able to get there, because they'll still be able to get there by the first. And you, as the chair, can sign off on sending them straight to the zoning board. Prior to the next meeting, ensuring that they get on the zoning board with a time to notice and everything else.
Okay.
They've missed all the October deadlines, so it would not have mattered if you referred them today.
That's a much more concise way of saying what I took five minutes to say, so.
Okay, information's important. I mean, the other kind of consequence of, of this interpretation of being a building is that, is we don't really have any ARB. Any, we have no elevations or documentation of material or what this, you know, I kind of asked earlier about that wall. I see a fence on it. Um, I see a fence on it, guys, you know, but we have elevations of that side of the building, but it's not complete, right? Because this back, this, this, uh, covered parking lot is also now part of the building.
Yeah, I don't, we still don't have full color elevations leading all the way back to the covered, uh, parking lot.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So.
And I'm trying to, well, the, the parking lot is very.
Talking about the elevated deck portion of the building.
Yes. So you're talking about this wall finish here?
On both sides. Do you want to get, why don't you show us one of those elevations? Cause I think that's probably easier to.
Yeah.
I know you don't draw the full grade plane in it, but, and I know it's a hill, but you're not showing.
Well, I think probably the best is, uh, we go to the section that's, I mean, this wall is going to be the same as type of color as the, uh, the, the building. There is no wall on, on the opposite side. And this is a short, um, you know, short wall here that we, these two walls will be the same color. So it's kind of, it's wrapping around the finishes of the building.
I actually think on this particular element, if we can look at the elevation, looking in that direction, because you, you have that and it kind of stops. It just stops abruptly at the back of, of the original building. If you go into your, 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 your elevations, you built, yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, the other side was probably the one that's relevant here.
Yeah.
That's the elevation. Yeah, that's, yeah, that one. So if he's over, right, it just stops, but that wall continues in reality.
Well, well, it's very by the grade, with the grade along.
Still, yeah, but it's still there, right? Right. It, it doesn't just stop like that. The building will not look like that. And I don't know what it will look like, to be honest.
Okay, so, yeah, and it, yeah.
This was asked for.
This is the grade, I mean, that's basically the, that's the grade plan here. And then it goes up higher because is the adjacent, uh, property.
Right. Will it be a brick wall? Will it be, you know, what is, is this the same stucco? Is it the same louvers? What, I mean, what, what is it? It's part of the building.
Most of this wall is very, it's, it is very, uh, surface. Um, let me see if I have a rendering of, of the neighborhood.
I mean, I, I, I actually know, I, I live up the hill from here. I, I know this, I know this site very well, but it's, it's not, it's not totally invisible. And when you're looking out, honestly, when you walk, when you walk up Plinton Avenue and you look out the backs, the backside of the store, this is, it is visible from the sidewalk as well. Between the, uh, between the oil change and the, and the ambulance there. So it's, it's visible.
If you're on Lincoln Place and you look at the, uh, right now, if you stand in there, uh, what do you see is the, that the property along, uh, Lincoln, right? Is it Lincoln Place and I think it's number two Lincoln Place, that that property is we, you see across to the patio. There is no, this is what I'm trying to, I mean, I can draw a line, but there is no finished building in the side.
But there will be an extension of the building, which is the deck, which you need to show.
Can you go back to the section that shows the grade plane where the building is?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Not this one. This one. Thank you. Go to the side that's facing the building. You, you see that there's those windows and the dirt is right there below the windows. And then like, it's as if there's a missing building, like there's nothing there. Like the whole, the world falls off the side of the map, but in fact, the building continues. And the dirt is either going straight up because there's a retaining wall there, or it's grading up because it's going to meet the grade, you know, the grade of the patio at some point. There's trees, you have it shown in the back. So what is the color of that wall?
So, so basically, what do you?
Show it on the elevations, show it and submit them to the planning board. You can't just tell us and explain it. You have to show us with color elevations as asked several times and submit them.
Okay. All right. Let me get this, this clear. This side of the elevation, I mean, I will show, so then I will show the, a line which are re, requesting the ground. And, and that's, if that's was requested, I mean, this is a, is a gray line, and I don't think I needed to show the elevation below the gray line.
Are you saying, I just clarify, if, if this blue line here is the dirt?
But this goes, this goes up.
Is it jogged straight up in the air with the retaining wall or does it just?
Yeah. This is all, this is, this, you have the, um, oil place in here, the, which I, I can draw the outline of the oil place. And then you have a grade that goes into, which is, uh, I believe is number two Lincoln Place, which is Valado's property. And we know this is the great time because they use the, they drive right, you know, they, they bring this up right onto the patio.
It's a six foot difference between that blue line and the patio. So does the dirt just go up? Is there, is there retaining wall holding back that dirt? Or does it grade up? If it grades up, then show a picture of what the wall looks like with the color and the, and design. If there's a retaining wall that goes up, then you need to show that on the plans and, and show what the design of that retaining wall looks like.
All right. If there's still a disconnect at, at this point, I think we need to talk about it offline because this is not productive for the board.
Yeah. So definitely need to have, because it definitely, uh,
Seems like, okay, JB, right here, this, just show the materials and the color of the back portion, the deck, whatever wall that is. We can talk about this more offline with staff, but the planning board has other items that it needs to address.
I, I do understand. And then that's, we've been waiting through. So this is, I got it.
Okay. All right. I, I, I think that kind of covers this item for right now.
Yeah. So, so then, I'm sorry if you bear with me for a second here, just to show you. So then this is what you end up seeing on the other side. Shows that I show here the wall because in the opposite side, we have a wall on the other side, we have a, a plane, but we will discuss that offline.
Yeah. Yep. Needs to be described. So that's fine. So at this point, I don't think we have, you know, we don't, we can't vote on, you know, the zoning issue. I think, uh, I think I may describe it really well. Um, we need the additional ABR, uh, ARB documentation to, to move forward in that respect. So I, I think that our, you know, as, as far as any actions right now, we're, we're waiting to see this, uh, come back to us. Um, any other board comments before we move on from this project for now?
Yeah, I, I just, and I, I don't want this to be a, a belabored point, but I, I'm not sure I understood your, your comments about the articulation of the cornice in the earlier drawings. I'm not sure I understood JB's answer as to why he couldn't still incorporate that original design.
No, I'm actually saying that we probably, uh, will discuss it with fine, but we'd probably be willing to, uh, do that back into, uh, the design.
Oh, okay. That wasn't clear to me. And then also I know from my notes from last time, there was some issue as to whether the, the spaces themselves met the minimum habitable requirements, the apartments.
That's been resolved.
Okay.
It's been proven that they do meet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Michael. All right. Does anybody else have anything on this? So I, and I, I would actually just kind of go back on that. I, I think it's important, you know, that we, our recommendation, my recommendation is not a board recommendation, but I, I think, you know, if, if we can look at, at that, at the cornice, that's, that is a substantial change, um, in terms of how the, the building reads from the street. Um, okay, I, I, I think that we can move on from this. I don't, you know, as, as far as public hearing, I, I don't, we're not, we're really not. We don't have a finished product to even review, to speak about. So I'm comfortable. Um, Amanda, would that be appropriate at this point to move, move forward from this without going into public hearing?
Right. So, um, I think that's probably smart because, you know, we're not entirely sure yet what type of variances they're going to need. We need to hear back from the building inspector. And so I would hold off on, on the public hearing right now.
Okay. But I think the variances that would be required are clear. They're not, we're not changing the, the, uh, footprint of the building and the deck is there. Uh, the finish of the deck is one thing, but the variance is a total different issue is how many feet away from a property line. Uh, and it, you know, we, we would like to get that referral as quickly as possible and not, you know, we're, we're in October, November. We're going to be talking about winter conditions. You all know that this building is open. It's open to the elements. It's going to be open for the winter. Um, and we, we have two stories up. We'd like to just see that we can move this process along. I can appreciate the concern about the color of the wall going back. The wall's there. Uh, JB obviously can put, you know, touch up the drawings that he has to. But the issues that we have for the boundaries on the other side of the building have nothing to do with what you're asking for tonight. And there's really been no comment that we indicate that we have to do anything on that side of the building other than what's been proposed.
I think Jaime outlined the, the zoning board, um, referral process, uh, in a, in a helpful way to try to move this project forward a moment ago. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, Seth, just to be clear, the, the planning board cannot make a referral until they have the referral letter from the building inspector. And the building inspector needs to have time, along with Keller in session, needs to have time to evaluate all the new information that was provided to be a hundred percent sure that all of the variances are properly identified. We haven't had time to do that yet. So, um, it's not proper to make a referral tonight.
So I understand that this could still get to the, uh, November meeting without your referral coming tonight? Guys will be clear about that.
Correct. Yes, it's.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I, I think that if we don't have anything else on this right now, um, let's try to move this forward. Um, so we can, uh, move on from this item, uh, to the next item on our agenda, which is, um, going into new business. Um, so we're going to start off with, it's a, it's a BAR for, uh, twelve dash twenty twenty-one for ninety-nine Brook Club Drive. Um, and this is a, uh, pool house renovation, uh, for the, um, for Club Homeowners, homeowners association. So we have folks here for that project.
Seth, the rest of your agenda is BAR, so, uh, I'm going to drop off, but I'm going to go have some dinner.
You, you go do that. Thanks, Joe. We really appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of the night.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a Matthew Cordon.
All right. All right. You're on mute, Mr. Cordon?
Let's try that again. Hi folks. How are you all doing tonight?
Very good. Thank you.
So, uh, yeah, I think, um, you know, this job, uh, that I'm presenting to you is somewhat straightforward. Uh, we are renovating an existing pool house in the, uh, Brook Club condominium units. Um, we, we are removing the existing cow wall, um, roofing structure and putting a
Cordon, do you want to, um, open up your screen and share your screen or would you like me to do it?
No, I, I can do that. I'm, I can sure hang out one second. So, uh, these are, these are the renderings that I have. Um, just to kind of give you guys an overview, I know you, you've seen these renderings before. Um, currently the, the state of the, uh, the pool house is a, um, a roof structure that was created with a cow wall, um, translucent, uh, glazing. And we are proposing to put on a new asphalt shingle roof with skylights. And, uh, removing, also removing the cow wall from the, uh, the, the, the wall, um, perimeter of the building and putting in, um, new, uh, sliding glass and storefront system. So that we can actually condition the space and have the, uh, the pool work, um, for, uh, the, the entire year as opposed to a three season, um, um, application, which, which we have now. We are not extending beyond the existing envelope of the building. Um, the rear of the, hang on. Let's show what is, is not working and. Hmm, it's odd. Let me try this again. I apologize for this. Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, for some reason, I can't seem to change the screen.
Jaime, do you have this presentation? Would it?
I think so, yeah.
Maybe, maybe try that. This is.
I, I'd like to just, uh, uh, I apologize for this, but I'd like to move from the, um, for some reason I'm on the west elevation and I can't get to the north elevation.
Would you like me to pull it up?
That would be great. Yeah. I, thank you.
All right.
I'm going to stop my share.
Just give me a second. I just got to move some things around on my screen. All right. Uh, which one would you like to look at?
Uh, yeah, this, this is perfect right here. This is the north elevation. So, um, what we are, uh, proposing to do is to take the existing envelope. Um, we are running a new storefront system or a glazing system around the perimeter of the building. And, um, above where this gable, um, is located, the, we are going to mimic the same, uh, wood clavert siding that, uh, occurs existing on the house, uh, the pool house itself, and also the rest of the condominium. Um, very, very modest move. Um, the idea is that we are just trying to hope to, um, uh, create a, 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 a full year, uh, pool house. So, uh, by removing the cow wall system from the exterior, uh, primer walls and, and the roof, it's going to give us an opportunity to get a better thermal, uh, value and, um, create a, 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 a better system of, of heating and cooling for, for, you know, for the pool. Um, if you were to scroll down to image four, this is, um, exactly what it looks like from the, um, south elevation, which we are not moving at all. And this is where we're taking that, that clavert siding from. This is the exact, um, design that was, uh, originally, uh, created and, and built and, and, and the, um, in the original development of the per club. Moving to, uh, the fourth slide is working our way back. You'll see the east elevation is very similar to the, um, to the, to the west elevation. You know, we are, um, again, just using, um, very simple elements, uh, shingle roof system with skylights and a, um, operable, uh, storefront style system for, uh, the, uh, vertical enclosure. And I do apologize. I have some physical samples. Um, I was hoping to present this to you all live. But, uh, unfortunately it didn't happen, uh, in this go around. So I do actually have some, you know, some images of the actual, you know, the metal that we're using for the storefront system and, uh, and, and, and the clavert siding that, that we, uh, that we're planning on, um, I'm putting on the outside. So.
Uh, I believe you did submit some materials.
I did. Yeah. I, I added it, uh, to the presentation. So you'll see the shakes, uh, on the timber line HDZRZ, the asphalt's, uh, shingle shakes. The skylights that we're using. And, um, uh, the, the railing system is, is going to be very similar to this image that I have here where we're just running a railing system around. Because, uh, we do propose to have, uh, that curtain wall system, oh, I'm sorry, that storefront system be operable. So the idea is that we have a safety device. So the idea is that we have a safety device, a railing system that would be there permanently when the doors are open. And then if you look over to the left of this image, you'll see the seagull gray. That is the, the signature paint color for, for club. And that's, that's the color we're going to be using for all of the wood clavert that we're putting on the north elevation.
And, and that, that railing system that you showed the photo of, so you actually, I see now that up close elevation, I was confused by that. But you're, you're proposing that same kind of curved railing post.
That's correct, yes.
As far as visibility of this, I, I tried to look on street view, but poolhouse visibility from neighbors or adjacent properties.
Yeah, it, it's quite tucked into the facility itself, so there really isn't any, any view from neighbors outside of the Brook Club condominium unit. I, I think I didn't offer a, a site plan that we, that we did present. I'm not sure if it's in, in this PDF set. But we did, we did add it and I think it's, it's quite indicative of exactly where this thing is and how it doesn't really affect, doesn't really affect anything that you can see from, from a neighboring property. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, you, you had it right. Your cursor is right there. Yep.
And so that would be the, the, the poolhouse end is on, on this image is on the left side. And then the, the actual pool itself is on the right of that, of that recreation building?
And that, that, yeah, actually the pool is within the recreation building. Yeah, it, it is, it is all within that context that you circled. That's correct.
Board members, any questions on this presentation?
No, straightforward to me.
No questions from me either.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we open this up to a public hearing? Can I have a motion to do that?
Michael Aronson, motion to open up a public hearing?
Second.
Eric Talbot, second motion.
Any objections? No objections. The motion passes by Nana's consent. Is there anybody here from the public to speak to this application? I don't see any hands up.
No hands.
No emails, Jaime? Got to ask.
People usually not going to be done.
I know. All right, well, with that, you can have a motion to close the public hearing at this point with nobody here to speak.
Bobby Bauch can make a motion to close the public hearing.
Michael Aronson, second.
Any objections? The objections, the public hearing is closed. I think that it's, you know, thoughtful presentation, sensitive design, and I'm, you know, other comments replace me. Put in a motion to approve this application.
Nina Aaron, motion to approve the application as presented.
Bobby Bauch, I second that motion.
All right, in a roll call?
Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Bauch.
Hi.
David Chow. David, are you?
David, can you make a, make a?
He's not here.
He just came back. David, you're, we're doing a roll call vote and we'll talk to you on, on passage of this resolution.
Or.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
There is. Thumbs up, David. Thumbs down.
Got it.
That's an I. Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
Hi.
And Eric Talbot.
Hi.
All right, motion carries unanimously. So thank you very much. And we might, we'll go on to the next item. We are up to BAR 14-2021, which is 158 Revolutionary Road. This is a BAR for an addition.
And we have Dave Barboudi and Alan Kira. Dave, you're live. You can talk.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Represent the Kira residence. Can share my screen. Going to try. It's been a while. It's only been six months since I've been on a Zoom, so. All right, Mike. That's the application. That's the wrong one. Rendering is up?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll work with this for now till I jump on my, the plans. So basically what we're doing is two-story addition on the south side of the existing one-family dwelling. It is approximately 1,028 square feet. We're keeping basically in context with the existing house. The siding color is hardy plank evening blue. We have remaining with timberlin roof shingles, which are pewter gray, white azac trim. We're doing a small addition in the front to define the existing entrance. Two small columns with two small pier, stone piers and a standing seam metal roof in thunder gray. The stonework at the base of the piers is an Eldorado stone, which is New England Winchester. And basically the addition consists of a first floor den with a screened-in porch off the side, butler's pantry and a laundry room. And the second, and the second floor would be in addition to the master bedroom suite, which would consist of a walk-in closet and a master bath. Let me see if I can jump to my floor plans, if I can find them. Jaime, if you could be so kind and maybe put my floor plans up since I can't find them. So on the site plan, as I first indicated, the addition is to the south of the property. We did go to the zoning board for a sideline variance, which was granted, I believe, over the summer. I believe it was a 13-foot variance that we received. If you could go to image number five, which would be the elevations. So once again, you get a better idea of the front entrance design in detail to kind of embellish the front entrance and maintaining the, you know, horizontal lines of the siding and roof lines. If you can just scroll to the side elevation on the same sheet. Go down. Once again, view from the side, the south side indicates the screened porch. Try to maintain the cape roof lines with small dormers in the front and the back. And if you just jump to the last slide, I can show the rear elevation. So basically, once again, this is a dormer where there would be a soaking tub in the master bath, two windows in the rear bathroom, master bath, screened-in porch, basically maintaining the same lines of a small deck extension to match the existing. So if there's any questions from the board, I'd be more than happy to answer.
My only question is, I, I know you very thoroughly described all of the materials on the rendering. Is that, is that documented somewhere in, in this set? I remember seeing it somewhere, but I haven't seen it in any of these presentations, other than.
Ask that question again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just didn't see where, where those different materials and colors were documented. They were very, very clearly and thoroughly explained when he went through the rendering.
I think there may have been a legend.
Let me check the application materials.
You're saying like a legend or schedule on the drawings or?
Yeah, I generally put a legend on the drawings, but for some reason.
I don't recall that, actually.
I don't see.
I think that what you mentioned was that you're going to make it the exact same color and materials as the existing house. So there's no change in the material type. But the house is a little bit old, so you're going to have to do some matching, correct?
No, the hardy board's pretty new.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I believe he even noted the color of the hardy board. I mean, everything was very, very specifically laid out. I just want to make sure we have that documented somewhere.
Right, I mean, I could provide a, a, you know, a legend, you know, an email to the board.
Yeah, that really.
House currently looks like now, the current house, as is. The photograph.
Are you just asking for a photo, if there's a?
Existence.
An existing photo?
I believe there were, yeah, yeah. Let me see any. Yeah.
I mean, I could try to pull it up off of mine.
Yeah, if you have it, just let me know. I'll take this down.
Yeah, that's fine.
Try to grab it. All right, you want to go ahead and see if you can find it?
Yep. Can you see that?
No.
You're not sharing.
Okay. It's not coming up, right?
That's it.
Yeah, we can see the photo. Yep, yep.
It's gone, it's gone. There it is.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the new entrance that you're, that's.
So. Correct. Let me see if I could find that other one and get a better picture. It's kind of difficult to get a good picture of, oh, that's basically the whole house. Down off the.
Very big.
Driveway. So it's kind of difficult to get a, get a good shot on.
Yep.
So right over here, I mean, it's basically, you know, very plain front entrance. Basically an arch top trim, kind of a colonial trim. The siding is relatively, as, as Alan said, it's. So I think it would be a pretty good match. The other reason why I stepped the, I didn't pack it foot or so, just to have a break rate in the finishes. So if there was a little variation between the colors, you know, you might not be able to see it. I mean, it's basically, if you see the road, you really won't be able to see that portion of the issue.
I mean, just, just from a procedural perspective, because I don't see, you know, we, we heard them, they're on the record in this meeting. I don't know if it would have to be, if we move forward approving this as, as a condition of the approval that these materials that were documented here are just made clear to the buildings department so that they're part of that approval, is that?
I think that's fine. That's fine. I think have them provide the requested legend that you, that you suggested. Yes, for purposes of your record here in making a decision, they're all, they've all been described adequately.
Okay, I, I, I think it's a great improvement and I don't, really don't have any other comments. I don't know if anybody else from the board wants to, to speak to this.
I had one quick question, just on the roof over the new entrance. It's a different roofing material, right? I just was curious why you chose to do that.
Correct, so it's just, it's, it's a metal standing seam roof. The only reason why we chose to do that was just to embellish the entrance and just to do a change in materials.
I think, I think it's a great idea. I think it looks really, it'll look really nice.
It looks great, Dave.
Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Just, just real quick, I mean, I agree. I think it looks great. And I'm just looking at this picture, is, is there a yellow house that I'm seeing through the trees, or am I imagining that? Is there a house adjacent to the property? That's the, the side to which you're going to be putting the addition on.
Through the woods, you can't really see it.
Okay, so I mean, I know you've got the side yard variance, but so this addition is not, is it, is it close to the line of the adjacent property or?
No, and it's not yellow.
Okay, I think I'm just seeing the yellow on the trees. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Do we, do we have a motion to move forward with approving this with the, you know, condition that we talked about a minute ago with the, that they'll provide a legend of materials?
I think you, you still need to open.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, can we have a motion to open a public hearing on, on this application?
I know. Oh, sorry.
I was going to give you a break, Michael. Nina Aaron, motion to open the public hearing.
Michael Aronson.
Any objections? No objections. Motion passes by Nana's consent. Jaime, do we have anybody here to speak to this application?
Let me stop.
Either in person or on email.
I just think, no, no emails. And let me just, if you can stop sharing. That'd be great. Thank you. No, no, nobody, no one raised a hand.
Can I have a motion to, there's, just let it be noted that there's nobody here to speak. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Bobby Bauch can make a motion to close public hearing. Eric Talbot, second motion.
Any objections? No objections. The public hearing is closed on this matter. And at this point, can we have a motion to move forward with approving this application with the stated conditions?
Michael Aronson.
Bauch can make, make motion close BAR with condition that, that Janice provided to the building inspector. Let's have some materials.
Michael Aronson, second.
Roll a call.
Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aaron.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Bauch.
Hi.
David Chow.
Hi.
Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
Eric Talbot.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
So we are going to keep moving. We are up to 284 Spring Street, another BAR. And this is a rear yard addition to 84 Spring Street. The representative is.
We have Hilda Duque. We have Hilda Duque, and we have Jose Tamaí.
All right. All right, welcome, guys, I think you're, you're in, and you can present your application, your drawings.
Sure, thank you, sorry, I thought I got disconnected, good evening, everybody. Thank you for staying so late. We made it to the last one. Yes, so let me share my screen first, I see my client is there, so that's great. One second. Okay. I think you can see my screen.
We got it.
Okay, great, I just wanted to put these two images next to each other, so hopefully it makes my presentation a little bit clear. So I'm gonna walk you through quickly our proposal, so we're trying to, we're asking for the approval of our rear addition. And also, we would like to renovate the front facade. Show you quickly, so this is the building 284 Spring Street. We're planning to change this whole facade, as you can see here, to a more residential look. Right now, this building has two apartments, which is non-conforming in a single, in a single zone, yeah, residential. But way back in the day, this was used as a commercial zone, so that's why you can see this more as a storefront. So because we're planning now to, to have only two apartments, basically one apartment, the first floor, and then the other apartment will be joining the two levels. We do need to make this more into a residential look for privacy, and also change the street scape, basically, in this area. Now, this is the rear. We are proposing a addition to the back, because as of right now, just the first floor, it has less than 600 square feet. Though with the 200, we're proposing an addition of 276 square feet, so that will give us a decent two-bedroom apartment of 929. The addition will be only on the first level, the second level, level will be a open deck. The houses are like very close to each other, we have like seven inches basically of that back. So, right now, we have, the idea is to keep going with the stucco in the addition. You can barely see, basically, from the street, the addition. Probably through this little. These are the materials that we're proposing, and then for the front facade, this will be our brick, which is like the closest one that we could get. The idea here is to probably back in this. To remove all this, the all this brick, so we can fill it in with new brick, and we will have this cornice. So it's basically a little separation, because our new brick is now going to be exactly the same as what's existing, but it will give us a little free work to have the other, the new brick. Lord, let me see, what else I can show you? So this is the front facade, the sides, which will be the addition, and then vinyl railing the other south elevation, and then from the rear. So, we will be basically removing all this bulk and leaving this nice trim work that you will see really in the back, and then cleaning up this facade and adding the stucco at the bottom. Let me see, I can walk you through our plans. I think they're here. So this is our side plan, what's existing right now. The, basically, the first floor is really small, it's only 876 square feet, apologies, I think I said 600. But then the deck, which is, there's already a slavon grade, which will be, which we will be demolishing the whole thing. And then what we propose now, which will be the, the addition with the deck above it. We do have a entrance to the basement, we're proposing an entrance to the basement, because the new proposed floor plan, basically, we wanted to keep all separate for one tenant. If you walk here, you have one tenant, and then the other tenant go upstairs, so we wanted to have the basement, since in the basement you have all this mechanical equipment, so I can go through directly to it. So this is the basement, first floor, the addition that we're proposing, and then the second level, basically, we're merging this one with the third level, which will become like some playroom and an office. Deck are the elevations that we propose. Trying to keep the architecture in its minimal expression, like trying to match what's existing, so we're aligning two windows, and then the entrance, making it like a little bit nicer. Few sections, and then some details for the cornice, our proposed brick, and then stucco, which will wrap up around the sides, and then in the back addition. The windows will be white. Vinyl windows, Anderson, double hang, too much the existing. Let me see what else I can.
I think that's, I think that's helpful, I, can you just, you have this section of the cornice that you're putting on the street side, separating the, yeah, so what's the material of that, of that water table or cornice?
Oh, yes, so it's pylon, it's basically, we're building up this section by having this white metal cup sheeting, sheeting, and then white metal cup on top of it. And then this, it's basically already a, already prefabricated. Asia, yes, it has some, I think, to get you a picture of it. White existing.
That, that, I'm assuming would match the color, you've got the Anderson windows, that, that's all.
Yes, yes, all of them would match the white trims, we're trying to keep us all consistent with the white trims, too.
And, and the door surround, the, at the main entrance door?
It's also white.
Is that an, an all Anderson assembly there, it's like a door and side light?
Yes, I mean, the side, I didn't want to have like more as a side light, it's actually a let's see if I can show you, it's more like a panel, apologies for this rendering, but because if we do, I mean, we can change it, we're open to changing it, but it's more like to keep us a little bit private, to not have like a side light as a commercial link, also considering that this is really close to the sidewalk. Kind of that's why also we have this a little planter, so it's not, I mean, since we're like on the sidewalks, we wanted to keep some privacy.
So I mean, is it, is that, so what I'm referring to is a side light, is that obscure glass, or is that, or is that just a, a metal panel, or a?
A metal panel.
And that's the same, because there's like almost like a little transom above the door?
Yes.
Okay, so none of that is glass, that's all obscure panel?
Yes, it's an obscure panel.
And then the, the lintels, you've got, it looks like you're kind of trying to mimic the cast, is that a marble or a cast stone, or?
It's cast stone, yeah, it's, so we're trying to basically match the same thing as it is on the other ones.
And you're, you're, you've got a steel, you have a steel support underneath that?
Yes, I mean, we have, this one, it's getting into the other size, I think I do have.
Yeah, it looks like you're showing it there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all that, all right.
Yes, apologies, yeah, this is all what we're presenting today, hopefully, I mean, if you have any questions.
Sorry, I, I, I just got a couple more questions right here, so I do see a shadow line on the door, enter the, the, the main, main door.
This one?
Is that, yeah, is that recessed back into the wall a little bit, is that why?
Yes, it is recessed, it's basically this area. So you will see, yeah. It goes all straight down.
And then the, the back of the building, I, I guess it was unclear from the existing photos, but I think I understand that you're, you're eliminating an existing kind of covered porch area, there's that low pitch roof in the back that's there in the photo.
Yes, basically, we are removing this whole area, and this deck. So our addition basically falls into almost the same square feet, almost the same.
And then it's, there's existing brick behind there, because on your, on your elevation drawings, it read as, on the, on the back of the building, you also have brick. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, I'm assuming it's just existing that you'll uncover.
Yes, it was existing when I first went to it, now it's a stucco. I'll need to discuss with my, I think it's only painted, apologies. It's painted brick. But the idea that we'll clean it up, and it's actually painted brick. So the idea is to leave this as is, we're trying to not touch anything, obviously, we'll need to do some repairs when we remove this whole structure, and then our addition would be stucco.
Okay, so, but then to be clear, you know, while it may have been coated or painted interim, the, the design intent right now is to remove this structure, re-expose the existing brick, and, and build this addition down below?
Yes, we should be keeping the brick there.
That's what you're drawing, that is what you're drawing, so.
Yeah. Correct.
All right, board, questions, comments, thoughts?
No questions, thank you.
Is that a full brick you're putting on the front, or a thin brick, or, or what?
It is a full brick, we're doing this metal backing up, obviously, the brick, but it is full brick, it's not just face brick.
Okay, thank you.
I can't remember from the, the elevations of the rear, will the deck have access to the first floor or not?
No, 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 only you will have access from the second floor. Can show you the.
All right, so there's.
This is the basement, yes, this is only the access, you will access through it from the second level.
I see, okay.
Other questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Can we go into a public hearing, see if there's anybody here to speak to this project?
Michael Aronson, motion to open a public hearing.
Eric Talbot, second motion to open the public hearing.
Any objections? With no objections, the motion passes by Nana's consent, do we have anybody here from the public to speak to this project? Looks like we don't.
Almost midnight.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
All right.
No comments, there's nobody left, yeah. Let me, let me just verify and check, make sure, speaking on turn here, but no, there's, there's two people left, and they're nowhere near.
I don't see any hands up either, you said you have no comments or emails, so with that, with nobody here from the public to speak to this, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Michael Aronson, motion to close the public hearing.
Bobby Baker, second motion.
Okay. All right, I mean, I, I think we've gone through this, I, you know, I, I think the drawings look nice. I think it's a huge improvement from what's there, especially facing, facing the street. You know. I, I, you know, I, I think that this, this should be there, you know, there's a couple of, you know, small things that we just brought up, was just, you know, making sure that the back of the building is you know, restored the way that it is in the elevations, which I think is important, and especially to the folks who, who look backwards on this building.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll discuss with my client, and we'll obviously show what we have presented today.
The only other nitpicky comment that I would have, which actually I think might matter, is on the, this, the cast stone lintels that you're showing, that the new ones that you're replacing, there's a little beveled edge on the, on the original ones, there's, you know.
This ones?
Yeah. It'd be great if that could be kind of recreated when you cast these other pieces. I think that would go a long way. And actually, as we, as you're zooming in, are you also showing a similar window sill on the new ones, it's right now with.
Yes, it's also stone.
Okay, I guess they're obscured by the.
A little bit, yeah, with my fake flowers.
And I, actually, I think the planter's a nice touch. So, I mean, I would.
Jamie's idea. He's carried that on.
It's good. All right, I mean, there are no other questions. We have a, a motion, I, I think, a motion to approve it, I, I, maybe we can make comments to the, I guess, if they're going to make some tweaks to some of those profiles, which are, is that something we can include as a condition, Amanda?
What do you, I'm sorry, what do you mean by profiles?
So that, just the, there's just the, the shape of the, of the window lintels. Yeah, it's, it's. Match the shape of the window lintels on the second and third floors, is what I'm saying.
I think that's fine to include as a condition.
And I guess the only other condition that I might consider is, is, I mean, we're, we've, we see a photograph of the brick, and we see a rendering. I, you know, I don't know if we'd want to have that, I mean, sometimes I know we have, have that, that brick match reviewed, kind of like a more thorough review of that. I don't, I think.
Do you need, like, physical samples?
Well, you, I mean, you have a photograph, I, what we've done in the past is we've, like, assigned like one or two board members just to, to, to review that. It, it maybe even review a mock-up, just to make sure that that looks, or to, like, go onsite and review it, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, I may be, I may be overthinking this. Is, is, is something that I happen to do 24/7, so I, I, I worry about it when it's not right.
Well, I think she said that they picked the closest, right? It's not going to be.
I mean, yeah, the, the building, it's like from 70 more than like 1930s or something, and we're not going to be able to find something exactly same, so this one was the, like, the only company that had like the closest, well, not the only, the one that I found first. But I can provide you with other, there are like other two that are like close to, but I ordered already some samples, so I can provide the samples if you.
These, these are my thoughts, this is necessarily this, you know, the entire board, so I'm just, you know, kind of just wanting to make sure we cover all of our bases here. And then I guess finally related to that would be the mortar joint color, which I do, yeah, I don't know if you've provided, if you've looked at the.
I haven't provided, but I'll definitely provide that.
So that, that might also be a sample that we might want to see subsequently and have reviewed, I, again, I, I just, you know, I, I'm mindful that we're moving relatively quickly through this, I think it's a very good design, I just want to make sure that this is all covered. I don't know if anyone else on the board wants to, to speak to that, or.
The mortar we use on the, on the old brick and the new brick, right, right, the mortars will kind of have, have an effect?
I mean, the mortar has a huge, that, that can really matter, it can change the way the brick reads. You would want to match what's on the, you'd want to match what's above.
Exactly, we're, we're, we're trying to match, I mean, it's not going to be the same as white as we have here, basically, it's a little bit darker in this area, so I'll try to, I mean, my idea, the whole idea is to match what's existing, as you see the windows, windows, and also the bricks, so definitely the mortar is going to be too much, yeah, existing.
And I would, I would propose, so one condition would, you know, the condition we mentioned a moment ago, which is that the window lintels will match what's above, the cast stone window lintels will match the profiles of those on the second and third floor, that, that, the, that the mortar, brick mortar selection will be. will, will be selected to match the, the mortar on the second, third floors as well. And with those two conditions, I, I would be satisfied with order of this.
All right, can you, can you just repeat that so I can make sure I have it?
Yep. So the first, the first would be that the, that the new cast stone window lintels on the ground floor will match in profile, in color and profile the window lintels on the, I just called the second floor, because those are consistent.
Got it.
And that the, that the, I would say that the brick mortar color and tooling on the new brick at the, at the ground floor level will match the color and tooling of the brick mortar on the second and third floors.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't you have something about the rear as well, Seth, or not?
I have that.
Yeah, and, and to be quite honest, the rear, the elevations show that, show it clearly. I think it was the photographs showed that maybe some, some alterations were made in the interim, but yeah.
Got it. So three conditions total.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion to approve with these conditions?
Michael Aaronson, motion to approve with the conditions as outlined by the chair.
Nina Aaron, second.
A roll call.
Seth Roy.
Hi.
Michael Aaronson.
Hi.
Nina Aaron.
Hi.
Bobby Baker.
Hi.
David Chow.
Hi.
Alberto Fernandez.
Hi.
Eric Talbot.
Hi.
Excellent. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Yep. All right. So that's it for new business and approval of the minutes. I always forget, do we actually, do we usually do a vote on that or is that just?
I think we should do it.
We should do it. I think we normally have done it. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was the July meeting.
Um, I had a couple of comments on the minutes.
Okay.
I'll keep them really brief.
Okay. It's what we're here for.
One was on the Clinton, I think it was three Clinton, the first one. It mentions vinyl siding, but in the next sentence, it says Hardy, which I think is a fiber cement, not vinyl, and I think Hardy is what it was.
Okay.
And then the only other thing was somewhere in there, it mentioned Eric as an alternate. And as he said earlier today, he is no longer an alternate.
Yeah, that's in the, the actual members present. The head says alternate board member.
Good call.
Thanks, Amanda.
That was it.
And I, I share your recollection that it was Hardy Board as well.
Yeah, it's on my notes.
All right, so with those comments noted, can we have a motion to approve the minutes with Nina's comments?
Eric Talbot, I make the motion to approve July 2021's minutes with Nina's comments.
Michael Aaronson, second.
Any objections? No objections. The minutes, the motion passes by Nina's consent. So I think that's, that's it. I, I guess before we go though, did we talk about, sorry, everybody, having a, a, a meeting, scheduled, scheduling a work session specifically to go through form-based zoning. You know, if we want to talk about the parking waiver issue, just kind of more globally, not necessarily specific to 14 Water Street. I think it's, it's, that's, I've, that's been on my mind. I've been thinking about that one a lot. So it might be helpful for us to just kind of work through those in a, in a different setting, where we don't take up so much time. So is there, I don't know the best, if, you know, if we stick with the Tuesday night, if we do this next, it was week or two.
Thursday nights, generally speaking, are the easiest for, for planning staff.
Okay.
And we don't have a lot of conflicts. Tuesday nights, obviously, is the same night for HPC. It's the same night for zoning board. Wednesdays are, are board and trustee meetings. And so Thursday nights have typically been the best day for planning staff. And so if, you know, whatever you can work out, that would be my preference.
Fine with me.
I, I think it, that Jamie could potentially send out a follow-up to the board and to gauge everyone's availability if you don't want to do it right now.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we also need to be mindful of like noticing requirements and stuff like that, so.
Right, right. I could, I could sit on a doodle pole like I do other times.
Perfect. Thanks, Jamie. All right, well, with that, can we have, I, I think we're done. A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Michael Aaronson, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Eric Talbot, second motion.
Any objections? No objections. The motion passes by Nina's consent. And good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Bye.